Councillor McNaughton, we're live.
Do I hear? Pardon me, I'm having a minor technical issue. Here we go. Thank you. I'd like to call everyone to order now. Hello and welcome. My name's Kate McNaughton and I am a councillor in Picton Ward. And I would like to welcome members of the public here with us today in Highline Hall. And I would like to welcome my fellow council members and the media and anyone who is joining us from home or in person for this committee of the whole meeting. Today's... We're meeting in Highline Hall in the Wellington District Community Centre. For those of us who are watching from home, and I appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation as we navigate with this hybrid existence. Today's agenda lists all the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motions on today's agenda are shown in boldface. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. The meeting is being livestreamed and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from the meeting will be published on the county's website immediately and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right of the county's homepage at thecounty.on.ca. And meetings are part of the public record. Under Agenda Item 6, I will be asking for comments from the audience and members of the public who wish to provide comments at future meetings can do so by contacting clerks at pecounty.on.ca to register. Today, we have seven registered comments from the audience. Welcome to you all. A reminder that if you participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes and form part of the public record and be posted to the county's website. Any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of July 12, 2022, at which time the council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable exits in the Highline Hall or wherever you are tuning in from. For those at Highline Hall, please mute and limit use of the cell phones. And presumably, everyone knows where their fire exits are at home. So... We're going to move on to... We've got quite a lot to do today. And we do have a bit of... We're going to try to move fairly quickly because we do have a few members that are trying to leave to join a Quinsey Conservation Board meeting at 3:30 if possible and without, hopefully, going into recess. We do have a couple of... Before we confirm the agenda, we've got a couple of people who have asked to be included as deputations due to... Due to... Well, they would like some consideration for item 7.1. And with that, I'll turn it over to councillor Harper, who I believe has a motion to that effect.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. This is a Harper Ferguson motion. It's Section 6, so the procedural bylaw be waived to permit a deputation by Anthony Lemke and a deputation by Richard Elliott regarding item 7.1 Wellington Heritage Conservation District Plan.
Thank you. So is everyone clear on what's being asked for? Yes, question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In principle, I don't have a problem with this amendment to the agenda. I mean, I've been faced with this situation before, prior to being on council. But I was never advised that the procedural bylaw could be waived so that my 10-minute deputation could become a three-minute comment. But I agree with the people that requested this. I just wish it had happened when I was a deputant. And that is my only...
So for all people listening, with any item in our procedural bylaw can be waived if there's agreement from all of council to do so. And we're not always as communicative about that to the public as possible. That said, I think certainly we can always allow people a little bit of leeway with a comment from the audience, too, to give them a little bit more time rather than waive the rules. So that's a great point and something that maybe should be...
I just hope it isn't precedent setting.
I think it's always best, particularly when we've got a bit of a heavy meeting and we've got a bit of a timeline, that we do not. But in this case, we've got it on the floor. I think everyone understands what we're doing. And I'd like to call the vote. All in favour? And that carries. So we're going to allow these two additional deputations. And thank you for your comment, councillor McMahon. So, without further ado, let us... The clerk was going to remind me to confirm the agenda, which is what I was going to do, but thank you. I appreciate it. So let us call the vote. We're going to confirm the agenda as amended. All in favour? Oh, mover and a seconder, thank you. So... You're seconding? So councillor Harper's moving it and Mayor Ferguson is seconding it. All in favour? That carries. Okay, so the first... So does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? I see no hands. So we will move on to presentations. And we have Carl Bray joining us from Bray Heritage to address the committee regarding Wellington Heritage Conservation District Plan. Madam Clerk, would you like me to find a mover in a second or to put this on the floor before or after? Thank you. So, welcome, Carl.
Thank you.
You have 20 minutes maximum for your presentation. And take it away.
Am I live?
Yes, I believe so. If you speak... If you want to angle the mic up just... Or if we can have the mic angled up just a tiny bit so that you can speak directly into it, people will definitely be able to hear you.
Can't miss it at this range. All right, thank you. Members of council, members of the public, thank you for giving me the opportunity to make this presentation. I'll try and keep it short, so there's plenty of time for questions and answers. This is the... One of the final stages of a long process. It really started many years ago in the early stages of the official plan review where there were various discussion pages, papers, rather, on cultural heritage and cultural heritage conservation. And those conversations and those discussions and research went on for many years. And as you know, the new official plan came into effect very recently. So, building upon that, you also have a parallel process of the secondary plan, which involved a lot of community consultation. And you have then this process, which started with the HCD study in the late summer of 2019. So what you see in the first slide is really something that came out very strongly in the public consultations, but also in reading the preamble to the secondary plan and looking at the historical record. And that is that one of the key characteristics of Wellington is its community and the ability of local people to feel that they're stewards of their community. And what you see here, of course, is the market with the town hall in the... Village Hall, rather, in the back. And that notion of stewardship, I think, is inherent certainly in the secondary plan, but really, it's fostered by the Heritage Conservation District Plan. And the Heritage Conservation District Plan not only gives you the tools to manage change, but it also talks about what kind of change fits. And that nuanced description, I think, is very, very important. Next slide, please. So today, we're going to be talking a little bit about the overall character, as has come through in our research in the study phase and has been reinforced by the consultations we've had. Brief summary of the study, brief discussion of designation and the contents of the plan. You already know the next steps. And then, obviously, we'll open for question and comments. Next, please. So those of you who've read the study and plan know that we looked at the overall character of Wellington in a number of different layers. So there's the overall district character. And then there... In any evolved community, there are subsets of that overall character. Different neighbourhoods, if you will, are different districts. And so we also looked at the character of those. So it's within an overall envelope, but then there are more subtle differences and unique characteristics in each place. So things that came out time and time again in the consultations and in the reading of previous discussions. Things like views to the lake, tree canopy, not just on Main Street, but also on the side streets. That feeling of being embraced by a tree canopy, the feeling that nature is very much present, both in terms of the lake, but also in terms of vegetation. And then there is a civic hub. And it's quite interesting, in Wellington, it's kind of one-stop shopping. You've got the churches, you've got the marketplace next to one of the churches, you've got the town park, you've got the village hall, you've got the post office. And then nearby, you've got the small commercial district with banks, with the library, with the museum, adding to those commercial facilities. Next, please. So also, in that commercial core, it's quite tight. It's also very low scale. This is a village. It's not a town. It's not a city. So that small pedestrian scale, one- to two-story buildings predominating, with the more important buildings being slightly larger, that's very typical of villages, not just in Canada, but elsewhere. And then a linear development pattern. Wellington is one of the few villages in Canada that is kind of strung out like a necklace with various things along that necklace. And so it's a development pattern that's quite interesting, and I think it's almost unique in this part of Ontario. Next, please. And needless to say, if you were looking at a kind of a Google Earth view, what you see is this linear development pattern sandwiched between the lake and the farmlands to the north. Now, needless to say, some of those farmlands are going to be redeveloped in the future. But that notion of being close to the water and close to farmland, close to the country, if you will, is very much part and parcel of the historical development of Wellington and also its current character. It's one of the reasons people love this place. And then there are some interesting associational values. This is a term that the Heritage Act would use. So important people and events. Reynolds House is not just important as a very old building. It's important because of the associations with Daniel Reynolds and his family, one of the earlier European settlers. But it was also the nexus of conversations and contributions with Indigenous peoples. So there... All those different layers are kind of manifest in this particular property. But it's not the only property in town that has those. Next, please. So most of those elements that I've just described were summarized in the Heritage Conservation District Study, which was completed and then submitted to council. Council adopted it and then gave my consulting team and staff the go-ahead to complete a Heritage Conservation District Plan. Next, please. So I mentioned that there are different sub-areas. The other thing about the study leading to the plan is we had to define a boundary. And so the boundary is really encompassing the greatest concentration of cultural heritage resources of many kinds. And each of these differently coloured areas has a slightly different character, but each of them is related to the character of the whole. Next, please. So the... Essentially, what HCDs do is give you not just the tools as a municipality, but also as a property owner, to understand how best to contribute to the character of the area. But it's also a notion of encompassing a holistic view of a place. It's not just about a bunch of pretty buildings. It's not just about, this is where some famous person did some famous thing. It's all of that. And if you look at the definitions in the Heritage Act and even in the provincial policy statement, you see that notion of holistic understanding of place. And I think that's very important because the Planning Act is much more of a crude instrument. It has difficulty, at least in its largest form, in official plan, in getting into the nuances of local character. Secondary plan can get into that, and your secondary plan does that to a significant degree. But a Heritage Conservation District Plan, as I've often said, is somewhat more poetic. It allows you to really elucidate the kind of meanings and values that local residents have expressed. It's not just, "I love being here." Well, what do you mean by, "I love being here"? And so the Heritage Conservation District Plan, in making statements like a statement of cultural heritage value of interest, and then a listing of heritage attributes, those attributes really are the summaries of those expressions of value. Next, please. So this series of consultations have taken place. The first public meeting actually was in late 2019, but there were conversations well before that. We had a steering committee. We were then given the ability to talk to many local residents, which we did in one-on-one interviews. So these are concerns that came out not just in this process, but also had been in the air in the press. They were expressed in the secondary plan consultation process. Many of these are planning issues. The Heritage Conservation District Plan doesn't deal with land use. But it does infer, or imply, rather, what types of changes would suit local character, would conserve and enhance it, or what would be deleterious to that local character. So this is kind of a shopping list of familiar themes that have come up in all of these conversations. So the secondary plan and the Heritage Conservation District Plan can work well together in addressing at least some of these. Next, please. More recently, we've heard, and this is really a summary of things that were submitted, both orally in some of the meetings we've been in, but also online. Again, nothing, I don't think, that will surprise most of you. Some of these are process issues. Some of these are issues about my property, what the impact would be on my property. And again, most of these, I feel, have been addressed in the current draft of the HCD plan. But again, these were familiar themes that came up, not just now, but they've come up many times in the past. Next, please. So just to review, needless to say, the pandemic was a hiccup in what would normally have been a fairly seamless consultation process. That being said, both the study and the plan have been on the special portion of the county webpage. We've had a steering committee, both for the study and for the plan, from the beginning. And so we've had consistent meetings, formal meetings with them, but also informal email correspondence and telephone calls with committee members as things evolved. We've had... A statutory requirement is for one public meeting. We've had three in terms of this whole process. One at the beginning and then two during this phase. We also were invited to speak to the local BIA, which we did, and were able to hear some of their concerns and hopefully address some of those. From that, there were that and email correspondence. There were several members of the public who wished to have more detailed consultation. We did that. We had in-person meetings with them. Those who were not local, we were able to have in-person phone calls and email correspondences. We met not once, but twice with the Heritage Advisory Committee. And we, of course, are now having the Committee of the Whole meeting for this, but we also had one in the study phase. And then, of course, it goes to council after this. So we have gone well beyond what's required in the legislation. And we feel that over the number of years that we've been working on this, we've been able to touch most of the bases in terms of consultation. Next, please. So just very briefly, what is the Heritage Conservation District Plan? As I mentioned previously, it's a change management tool. It has two components, as required by the Act. It has mandatory requirements, which are policies. And then it has discretionary guidelines. People often get these confused. They think that guidelines are mandatory. They are not. They're really a consolidation of best practices. They're good advice. One of the things that can often happen when you're looking at a heritage context is that the discussion gets very subjective. You know, "I like this colour of paint," or "I like this particular detail." One of the things you can do with guidelines is you can focus that discussion a lot better so that both staff and the property owner have a clearer idea of what they're talking about and what types of modifications to the property would make sense. Next, please. So this is just a very quick summary of the process. The blue on the side, I think, is important because many people worry that they can't do anything with their property when it's been designated, whether it's an individual designation or a designation within a district. That's not the case. Basically, routine maintenance, the kind of things you would normally do to keep up the property, those don't require a heritage permit and are just part of normal practice. There's some good advice we've given for maintenance in the plan, but it is discretionary, as most guidelines are. What requires a heritage permit is really the same sort of thing that would require other types of permit, building permit, for example. So that you have to go through a certain process, consultation with staff. Ideally, you start with a discussion with staff to get a clear idea of what's expected of you. If it's a fairly major change on the right, you get into a little more detail. It has to be provided to the municipality, a heritage impact assessment, for example, and there may be more supporting literature. So usually, the sequence for a more major change, as you can see in the yellow on the right, is to go through a staff review, staff reporting first to the Heritage Advisory Committee and then to council. The... Certainly, any major change through a heritage permit is also appealable to the OLT. Next, please. So the other thing about a district designation is that it does have this idea of a transition. So in the provincial policy statement, they have the word adjacency, also in the Heritage Act. So for major applications within the district, any property that's contiguous with the boundary of the Heritage Conservation District needs to take into account the policies and guidelines of the HCD. And that taking into account process is normally accomplished through a heritage impact assessment. Doesn't mean that the property next door necessarily has to completely conform, but it should take account of, and the heritage impact assessment will give guidance as to what kind of process that would be. And then within the HCD, it's as in the official plan, there needs to be a heritage impact assessment to cover those aspects. Next, please. So you're familiar with Heritage Conservation Districts because you've got one here. There are many others that are over 130 across Ontario. They've been around for a long time in the United States, in Britain, and certainly in Canada, in Ontario, since the Heritage Act was passed in the mid-1970s. So again, in the Picton example, there are policies and there are guidelines, based on historical research, based on consultation, and best practices in conservation and planning. Next, please. This is another example, downtown Lindsay, primarily commercial district, but also with a lot of ceremonial overlays, as you can imagine. The main street of this town is where a lot of community events occur. Again, a mixture of policies to start and then guidelines for various aspects to follow. Next, please. So we're at the process now, Committee of the Whole. Could go forward to council for consideration. If council approves it, then they also pass designating bylaw. That bylaw, there's a 30-day appeal period. Should the bylaw and the plan go through that appeal period, without an appeal, then it becomes law and is in force and effect. Again, this is the same process that's been used across Ontario. It's fairly straightforward and it gives plenty of opportunities for council, certainly, and their volunteer committees, to have a good, solid look at what's being proposed. Next, please. So in summary, as I mentioned before, this... An HCD encourages development, but of a compatible kind, and compatibility is largely defined in the study and plan. And it doesn't come out of thin air. It's not something that I, as a consultant, cooked up. It's something that local residents want, but their particular ways of expressing it aren't planning and legal speak. Part of my job as a consultant is to translate those values into planning and legal speak so that it can be part of a Heritage Conservation District Plan and designating bylaw. As I mentioned, there are over 130 of these across Ontario. I was involved in one of the first in the late 70s and early 1980s. And there have been many since then that I've either been involved in or have reviewed as part of development applications or other planning actions. There are definitions and clarity provided to a lot of things that otherwise would be one person's opinion versus another person's opinion. And I think most of the comments I've heard about the Picton Heritage Conservation District are generally favorable. It seems to have worked quite well. Some of the kinks have been worked out. And they're always, to some extent, a work in progress in terms of how both staff and the public work together. But they do that work within a solid policy and guideline framework. Next, please. So this is just a little cartoon showing some of the things that can happen when there aren't firm policies and guidelines and someone tacks on something that really doesn't fit in. So, anyway. Next, please. So thank you. I'm available, as is my colleague, Lindsay Reed, and of course, other councillors and the manager of planning, Michael Michaud. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we're going to now turn to the committee to see if there are questions for the consultants. Thanks, councillor Harper.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks, Carl. Just back to your experience on these sorts of studies. You said there are 130 that exist in Ontario. How many have you and Lindsay worked on?
Well, personally, I've worked on at least 15. And then I've been involved in many more in various capacities, either reviewing them or working in a development context, that kind of thing. Yeah. And as I say, the first one I worked on was back in the late 70s and it was designated in 1981.
And just to follow up a minute?
Absolutely.
So knowing that you've got that experience, how would you characterize the consultation part of this one? Would you say you did kind of an average amount, maybe required less than before? Or have you spent more time consulting than perhaps some of the other ones you've worked on?
Sure. But just to follow on from your previous question, Lindsay Reed has also been involved in at least 15 Heritage Conservation District studies and plans. So we've been around the block a little bit on these. In answer to your second question, as I mentioned previously, the Act only requires one statutory meeting at the study phase and at the plan phase. We've done many, many more. Plus, we've added to that with email correspondence, steering committee comments, and one-on-one interviews. So compared to some of the other Heritage Conservation Districts... So compared to some of the other Heritage Conservation Districts I've worked on, we've done a lot of talking to people at the various stages since the September start in 2019.
Thank you.
Other committee members? Does anyone have anything further for the consultants? I see no hands. So thank you very much for your presentation. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Can I look to the committee for a mover and a seconder to receive the report? Thank you, Councillor Harper and Councillor Prinsen. Thanks.
Harper Prinsen motion that the presentation by Carl Bray, Principal Bray Heritage, to address committee regarding Wellington Heritage Conservation District Plan be received.
All in favor? And that carries. Thank you very much. So we're now going to move on to the deputations. We're going to begin with Anthony Lemke, who's speaking to item 7.1, the Wellington Heritage Conservation District Plan. Anthony, please join us.
Thank you, Councillor Harper, for letting us speak a little bit longer. I appreciate that. And I just want to add on a little bit to your question over there to Carl. As someone who has been consulted with, I do appreciate your openness. I think the first time was literally me just calling him out of the blue and him picking up, and we had a good hour-long conversation. That was when I first discovered it. I must admit to not having heard about it until the draft final plan came out, pandemic and all the rest of this stuff. I think I'm probably not alone there. That said, thank you for your time and an engagement with the little memo that I wrote as well, and Councillor Harper as well. We walked, you know, one of the sites that we own in town. So who is "we"? We are Warf Lane Developments, and we've been in town. We own properties south of Millennium Trail exclusively, and we purchased our first property after the secondary plan came into force. And it's me and my brother and a buddy of mine from grade one, who had been coming to the county since about the mid-zeros, and we had moved to the county with my family while the secondary plan was being put together. And so I was able to participate in the consultations and fill out the surveys and, you know, dream about what the future of our village could look like. We have since, since about 2019, moved to Montreal, where our kids go to school there, but I'm back every single week and we are, yeah, we are deeply involved in the future of this town, although I am only now a part-time, sadly, a part-time resident. I'm here because, not because I don't want to protect heritage. I don't, I haven't met anybody who doesn't. I think our track record speaks for itself. If you've eaten at, you know, former Enid Grace Cafe, or gone to Sybil Frank Gallery, or went to see a festival player's show, these were all residential buildings that we purchased that had commercial zoning that no one else wanted to purchase. When we bought our first commercial building, it was sitting on the main street and it sat there with a for-sale sign forever. You could have put up a for-rent sign and no one would have wanted it. But because of the secondary plan, I phoned my brother and I phoned my buddy and I said, "Listen, this vision of a dense, walkable, vibrant, revitalized main street, one that is compact in form, but that does respect its history and the fact that it's a waterfront town, I want to share in this. I want to participate. I want to invest in it." In order for a secondary plan to come to fruition, you need people to dump money in. You need people to take chances. So we bought our first building and I went on knocking on all the doors up in Belleville saying, "Hey, have you heard about Wellington? It's going to grow. The Drake might open. It's going to be really great." And we managed to bring some people in town. And I think at the top of when we still owned, we've sort of, you know, transitioned through some properties and sold them out, we had brought 13 different businesses to town that weren't there. And it was the secondary plan and the confidence that we had that our visions for something we wanted to participate in was echoed by the community in which we were living. I have made a mistake, an investment mistake, in a community where I wanted to do what the secondary plan wanted. And I have an experience with a heritage designation. It's not in this province, so it's a little different. And I can tell you exactly what happened in that scenario. We ended up selling our property because the heritage in that scenario, the heritage conservation guidelines, ended up kind of throwing a straitjacket over town. And what ended up happening to the new businesses is that they went to the mall, which was in a cornfield about three kilometers away from the old center of town. In fact, I owned the original heritage building in town, the one to which everyone else was being compared and forced to build to, okay? So I've had a little experience. I'm a little gun-shy, I must admit, when I see this HCD, and I'll tell you why. My understanding of the Wellington secondary plan, it's a 95-page document, there are two subsections in that document that deal with heritage and design. That's about nine out of 95 pages, maybe 10 out of 95 pages. To give you an idea of all the different types of policies that we're considering, that's the weight given to those. And in the secondary plan, the design section actually isn't guidelines, they're called elements. And you guys, councillors, are supposed to go and create real design guidelines. And one of the ways you can do that, it actually says that in the secondary plan, is bring in someone like Carl to do an HCD, and that'll give you some design guidelines, okay? What's interesting to me is when I read Carl's vision, that comes, I'm not saying it's Carl's vision, sorry, I misspoke, when I read the vision that Carl found among the people he consulted, this is what I see. And this comes from the HCD plan. "The Heritage Conservation District Plan emphasizes the current development pattern of smaller structures located on large lots." I think that's also fairly clear from the presentation. "HCD plan aims to direct development such that Wellington remains a village." And that term has come up a lot, a village. "With few buildings taller than two stories, with generous side and front yards that accommodate trees and gardens." I think it's important to keep that in mind when you're thinking about voting on this because if I were to sum up the secondary plan, I think you'd look at the other 85 pages of the secondary plan, but actually even the design guidelines. If you look at the green design guidelines, they use the term "compact village" so that you can maximize the existing sewer capabilities and infrastructures. They use the term "walkable." They're trying to encourage people to leave their cars at home, and I think a pretty clear understanding of what that means is don't do small buildings on large lots. Kind of go the other way. But even if you look at the other 85 pages, I'm not going to go through each one of the sections and policy objectives, but on the whole, I'll give you a summary, and you can take a look at it. I had a great opportunity to read the whole darn thing again over the past weekend. Man, it's a great document. Not perfect, but great. This is the way I summarize it. I encourage you guys to create your own before you vote on it. "Wellington residents want the village to grow into a vibrant, walkable, sustainable, full-service, year-round waterfront town with a thriving business core located along a revitalized main street, a town that grows from the inside and respects its history." I didn't make any of that language up. I took 100% of it from the secondary plan, and I would encourage you to think about how that description fits with smaller structures on large lots. And then I would encourage you to think of the fact that the HCD plan itself touches on two zones considered in the secondary plan, the village core and the village corridor. Those are the two zones that the secondary plan targets to create the town that I just described. So in my opinion, we have a conflict of visions. Now, the OHA allows for that. It's a document that exists outside of the documents that created the secondary plan. And the whole point, my understanding of having read the OHA, is to say, "Hey, listen, sometimes, you know what? Heritage is more important." So forget about all the other policy objectives that might exist in your planning documents like the secondary plan. Forget about them. Forget about economic development and housing and efficient use of sewers and walkable villages. Forget about that because there are certain things that need to trump that. And on that note, be very careful. This document that you are about to bring into force trumps everything. Every municipal bylaw is trumped by this document, which means if you want to change something on your property or you want to develop your property, the first thing you do, look at that 97-page document, which is full of design policies and guidelines. And as an aside, the way I read it, and maybe this is a question for Carl and some sort of rebuttal, is that the guidelines are actually also mandatory. And that's because I can't adopt anything that runs counter to the guidelines. Strange. So I think it's important to understand that this tool exists. Yes, let's use it. Let's use it to protect the things that really matter to us, but let's be careful with how much we use it. Let's be judicious about that. But what does judicious mean? And I think, I don't have an idea for that. So I went to the Ontario Trust.
Sorry, just to interrupt, you've got one minute left, or not quite, actually.
Yep.
If you could summarize. Thank you.
I'm going there right now.
Right.
I went to ontariotrust.on.ca. I would encourage you all to go there, and it is a database of every single HCD that's been put together in this town, sorry, in this province. It has summaries of each of them. The summaries talk about how extensive this policy tool is. How many properties are we putting under this policy tool that puts design before every other policy objective? If you received the letter that I sent this morning, you'll see the numbers. I won't bother going through them. But in the end, if you average it out for towns, call it less than 30,000, you end up with something along the lines of one building per 130 residents. In Wellington, we have, yes? You're looking at me like I don't have...
Yeah, it's time up.
Can I have 30 more seconds?
No. You've been given 10 minutes that procedurally we allowed, so I would say that's fairly luxurious. Thanks, Peanut Gallery.
Luxurious.
Fairly luxurious. So, and we do have a timeline, and we do have several members who are trying to leave the meeting at 3:40 on time.
Thank you very much. I'd encourage you to take a look at that and note how excessive Wellington's use is. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for the speaker? I see no questions. Thank you. Oh. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Councillor Bullock, come on back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I must say, in the almost four years I've been here, that was one of the most eloquent and thought-provoking deputations we've had.
Thank you.
So thank you for that. When you were describing the small buildings, large lots, in your mind, is there a difference between the commercial core and the more residential area where we do have those smaller stately homes on large lots?
Yes, in fact. I understand that the secondary plan is not a perfect document, and I think part of the reason that we're here is that the secondary plan did something, probably a little bit of overreach. It basically rezoned Consecon to Belleville Street Village Core, and Village Core is a density that is, you know, 60% lot coverage, four stories. I personally think that that kind of denatures a lot of sections of our town. Like if you take where the Queen Anne's are, where the Fishes live in that beautiful house, where Mike lives, I don't want to see that thing turned into some sort of super-dense, you know, that's the secondary plan. So we have an option to maybe balance some of the objectives a little bit better. And I think there are locations that it's more appropriate to open the gasket a bit compared to what the HCD is suggesting. And I suggested that to Carl in a memoir I wrote, that I think that there's a couple zones, if you tweak the lines of those zones here and there, where I think we need to open it up. And I think maybe there's even an opportunity to actually take them outside of the HCD. But even if we keep them in the HCD to create language that's far more flexible, a lot more like Pickton's language, and allow those areas to grow while keeping certain areas that everybody would agree, honestly, I don't want to see those, I don't want to see those houses disappear at all or even be altered. And I am hoping that it's that kind of balance that we can achieve together when we decide how best to protect the heritage that I think we all want to protect.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Can I have someone receive the deputation from Anthony Lemke? Thank you very much. Mr. Lemke?
I was going to say, do we just receive the, do it separately as opposed to together?
Separately.
Okay, so sure, I will.
Thank you. Councillor Harper, seconded by Councillor Bullock. Thank you.
Harper Bullock motion that committee receive the comments, deputation from Anthony Lemke.
Thank you, and we're going to, oh, all in favor? Thank you. We're going to move on to our next speaker, Richard Elliott. You've come on up to, come up to the mic. You've got 10 minutes, and I will cut you off at 10 minutes just for timing, not to be rude. Thank you. Go for it.
Thanks very much, and thank you for the additional minutes. I'm Richard Elliott. Some of you probably see me in the last few weeks, months. My head's popped up more than the first decade we lived here. We lived a quiet life. I guess we're now longtime residents of Wellington. We have a property residential on Warf Street and in 2014 bought a commercial property on the middle of the main street. I put a submission in to the county on May 10th about the heritage plan. It's in the materials, I won't reiterate that. I'm going to, that discusses both properties. I'm going to focus my remarks here on our commercial property on the main street, which is the primary concern. Just some preliminary remarks, just about the timeline. So we knew there was study going on and we knew there were different things being looked at. I grew up in a family, did a lot of this heritage stuff. I was actually a member of Toronto's Town of York Historical Society and all that sort of stuff. I did not anticipate when the first draft of the plan came out two months ago that it would look like this, which is very different from Pickton, very different from other things I've seen in at least a couple of respects. One is the extent of the coverage of properties, which I think was what Anthony was speaking to at the end. Seems to cover far more properties for the size of the town. We have a dozen or so Heritage Act buildings. I expect a few dozen more, but it's, you know, kind of well over 200. Seems very disproportionate for the size of the village. The second respect, seems very, much more prescriptive, certainly than the Pickton plan. It's much more limiting in terms of what you can do, replacing building setbacks, height, things like that. I did put the submission in that hopefully you've read, if not, I encourage you to, a couple days ago, about the fact that there's lots more shells and whatnot in this plan, at least 10 times as many as in the Pickton plan. And as Anthony said, the guidelines are effectively mandatory as well because you have to comply with them. If you don't comply with it, it shall not be permitted, so. What I wanted to focus on here, and it's not to, I guess, one more point about the process. I've gone to what I thought were the meetings. I went to the public meeting on May 5th on the plan. That's the only one I'm aware of. So if there's another one, I'd appreciate knowing about it just so I can look at the materials, make sure I haven't missed something in this process. I also went to the WDBA meeting. Both meetings, there were lots of questions and comments. I met with Carl and Lindsay on 24th of May, showed them our properties and specific concerns. I think they, you know, genuinely sensed that we're in a bit of a unique situation there. Our commercial property, I will now focus on geographically and pick up on Councillor Bullock's question about commercial versus residential and sort of try to hone in. I'm not trying to be totally self-serving about our property, but in the limited time I need to talk about it, and I think it serves as a sort of a case example. There is a fundamental difference between residential properties, where you have a home, and commercial properties. What we bought on the main street in 2014 was not a house. Our purchase and sale agreement is to purchase a property. It's a commercial property that can have all kinds of uses, it's zero setback, 60%, you know, all of the things, four stories, all of that stuff. And contemporaneous with that, we were encouraged by the county to do the sort of, same sort of things that the secondary plan, which was on the eve of coming out, and we were aware of it, not only said you can do, but went further and encouraged you to do that. aware of it, not only said you can do, but went further and encouraged you to do that, which was to put storefronts on the Main Street, to put mixed-use housing apartments and things in upper floors, all these sorts of things. So, anyway, and we can't even use that as a house anyway, in the sense of a home, it's not zoned for it. It's currently an SDA, because when we bought it, we asked them before we bought it, could we do a vacation rental for now, until we see what happens with the midtown property and everything? And they said, yes, that's where we want you to put it, on a commercial site. And, anyway, it's an SDA, it's stayed an SDA under this heritage plan. If we can't do anything with the house, it's purpose-built at this point to be that. It's not the end of the world, it's a nice house. We reclad it, we fixed it up, we improved it, I think. I don't think it's a heritage house by any stretch, but here's the geographic issue. So, there's a fundamental difference between commercial properties that have that flexibility and residential properties that are a house or a home. It's understandable that most of those people aren't going to be impacted in the same way. But even in the very small commercial core, if you look on the map, it's essentially west of the post office along the Main Street and the Drake on either sides, even within that pocket, most people aren't impacted the way we are. So, you've got a bunch of stuff, the heritage already, and you've got the Fitzgerald Block, you've got the food land, which is a big footprint, which is non-contributing, you've got the Drake, which is right next to our house, and they've already built out to the max, trust me on that. And then on the midtown property and that sort of stuff, north of the Main Street, it's impacted by the creek to a fair degree. We're one of the few properties, and then, and then most of the others are already built right to the street line in full dense. We're one of the few properties that has a substantial optionality for commercial development. You know, we're situated between, in that pocket, between the post office, side street gallery, the meatpacking plant and midtown brewing, the school, the library, we're right in there. What can we do at this point with that property? Not a lot, as I understand, under the heritage plan. I don't think we can take the house down and put something. So, here's just the example we sent to the county. Can we build a building that's two stories at the front with storefronts, terrace back to a third floor, and its apartments on the top two floors? And I think it's a non-starter under this plan. That may be different. Michael indicated something to me before we started today, suggesting that might, might be different. But as I read the plan, we can't do any of that. I've indicated in the submission I sent in this week, some of the goals of the secondary plan, which I think are valuable goals, housing, things like that. I don't think those should be trumped entirely and lost by this plan. But even if we go to heritage and say, we want heritage, I've pointed out there that the big iconic three-story, 100-room hotel was at that same intersection across the street for four decades, until it burned down in 1917. Seems to me it's all part of our heritage. Our house on Warf Street was built in 2007. It's a modern beach house, modern windows, no mullions, anything. It's designated contributing. I guess it's nice, we like it. I'm a little lost as to what the meaning of heritage is, and why what we would be proposing on this property could not potentially benefit not just us, but the village. So, here's the fundamental problem that we have. We've had that property now for nine years. I've talked to tons of people. People come back year over year because they like it. They all like the house, everyone likes it, we like it. We would never take that down lightly. It would only be if we saw an opportunity to do something that we thought was great for the village, like along the lines of what I was suggesting there. I haven't met a single person when I've talked about what we want to do, and this includes very strange heritage advocates, who don't, once I explain what we would contemplate, say, that'd be a great idea. I talked to one earlier this week, and she was a big advocate of the plan, and she looked at me when I told her I can't do it on the plan, she said, oh, no, that's not right, that's not what was supposed to happen. So, maybe that's an oversight that can be corrected. I appreciate we're in a bit of a unique situation, but I think now is the time and place for me to make you aware of that reality. All we're really asking is, I am more than happy to have the village or the council decide any sort of plan that it would be, one minute, is that the, I've got the...
Just barely.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Decide what's best for the village. We wouldn't even, it wouldn't even get off the ground for us if we didn't think we were doing something that everyone, our neighbors, everyone, thought was a great idea. We're not grand developers. We're residents who bought a property, saw a chance to build it. We don't know what's going to happen to Wellington in the next five, 10, 20 years. It may double, triple in size, at which point a 50-by-70 property right in the center of the village might have a better use for everyone, and we just want people to be open to that.
Thank you very much. So, I'm, stay put, I'm going to open the floor to comments or questions from the committee. I don't, I don't see any at this time. Thank you very much for bringing your thoughts to us. We're going to move on, oh, I would like someone to put this on the floor. Thank you, Counselor McMahon, and Counselor Nyman to second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is McMahon, Nyman, motion that Counselor...
Richard Elliott.
Yeah, Council received the deputation by Richard Elliott.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. We're going to move on to, we are going to move on to comments from the audience now. Currently, I've got registered seven comments from the audience. We're going to begin with Brendan O'Callaghan regarding item 7.1. Just so you know, you've got three minutes, and we're trying to stick to our timeline today. Thanks.
Certainly, thank you very much, Madam Chair. It usually takes me three minutes just to clear my throat, but I will be brief today. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of council. I am a partner in the law firm of Airdan Burles, and I represent two landowners in town. Warflane is one of them, the Numbered Company is another, and between them, they own a number of properties here in town. I've submitted a letter to the Clerk, it'll be in the supplementary agenda. It sets out the various issues that I see with the draft. But I'm going to focus today, in the remaining time that I have, really to put some meat on the bones of what both Mr. Elliott and what Mr. Lemke raised as their concern, and it is my principal concern as well, which is to say that both the plan and the guidelines as drafted, respectfully, they supersede the secondary plan, in my view. And I'll take you to the specifics of how they actually do that. In my submission, that's not appropriate, that the guidelines and the plan should supersede the planning, which was adopted, the secondary plan was adopted by council fairly recently, which makes it current and appropriate policy. What the guidelines do is they say that new buildings should match the setback, footprint, size, and massing patterns of existing buildings. That's guideline 8.2. Guideline 8.1 says that new construction should maintain the height of adjacent structures. And so, between those two guidelines, you've got direction that any new build be the same as what your neighbors already have. And if that's a one-story building, so be it, you must build a one-story building. Whereas the secondary plan, as you know, in the Village Core permits up to four stories. The guidelines are therefore completely inconsistent with the secondary plan. And I agree completely with Mr. Bray when he just said that guidelines should be discretionary, not mandatory. But respectfully, these guidelines, as I read them, are indeed mandatory by use of the word "shall." And what it says in page 36 of Mr. Bray's report is that the county encourages intensification on vacant or underused lots in the district in the form of compatible new infill. Such intensification shall be consistent with the policies, and this is the kicker, policies and the guidelines. And so, those guidelines I just read to you about you must build what your neighbor already has, whether it be a one-story, in terms of setback, in terms of height, in terms of massing, in terms of density, you shall build what they have. So, the use of the word "shall" in my respectful submission is where I take great concern with both the use of it in the plan itself and in the guidelines. Because in my view, the use of the word "shall" elevates the guidelines and the plan above the secondary plan, making it more, the more relevant policy in terms of pulling a building permit, applying for site plan approval, it is what takes precedence over the secondary plan. And that is what, in my view, in 35 years of practicing this type of law, causes me great concern. And so, in that regard, Madam Chair, and members of council, I invite you to not accept the recommendation that is before you today, but rather defer. There's no urgency associated with this, in my view. To be fair to Mr. Bray, he has been very willing to discuss with us. I don't believe there's enough time between today and July 12th, when council will vote. So, it's my respectful submission that I ask you to defer this, to allow us the opportunity to work with Mr. Bray and staff in order to come up with something that, in my view, is workable and frankly, more consistent with the Planning Act and the Heritage Conservation Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Counselor Bullock.
Me again. Thank you for that. As someone with a bit of background in legislative drafting, I take your point. And you're urging us to reconsider. Do you have any quick fixes in mind?
I don't believe they're quick, Counselor. I do have some fixes. I've set some of them out in the letter that you'll see. I, as I've said, I don't think we can get there between now and council. I certainly think we could get there. I'm not here on behalf of my clients to oppose any heritage conservation district plan or bylaw. On the contrary, I think it's appropriate, my clients think it's appropriate, but I think we should have one that is workable. I, I, I am very concerned, as you've heard me, about the use of the word "shall." There's some concern as well about the delegation to city staff, or town staff, I'm sorry. And if they make a decision to say no, based on the guidelines, you can't build what you're proposing, then that's the end of it. No one has an opportunity to appeal that, the way they would a bylaw or a secondary plan. So, what, the thing that causes me the most amount of concern is the reference to the "shall's" and "must be built in conformity with the guidelines." So, that's a relatively easy fix, but there's a lot of "shall's" in the 94 pages that I have read. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments for the speaker? No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks. So, we've got, I believe, Lourdes DeCosta joining us from, on, joining us from the Zoom. We'll give her a moment to connect.
Hi. Sarah.
Hi, Lourdes. I think you can hear me now. Welcome to, welcome to the Zoom. If you can make sure that YouTube, hello, welcome. If you can make sure that YouTube is muted. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm Lourdes DeCosta. My husband, Richard Nice, submitted a letter to this committee, and you've heard from him today describing our serious concerns with the HCD plan for Wellington. I wanted to take these three minutes to further reinforce our objections to the plan as drafted. Put simply, the plan is overreaching and underconsulted. Proceeding with limited dialogue with those directly impacted underscores the importance that you get this right. When I first heard about the concept of a heritage plan for Wellington, I imagined the greater preservation of buildings and areas with important historical significance. And I thought, oh, that sounds like a good idea. Never would I have thought it meant freezing the entire center of Wellington as it stands today, with certain buildings that are, let me be kind to say, ho-hum, and certainly not historically significant. One would think such buildings would be designated as non-contributing, but based on what's in the plan, that's not the case. More fundamentally, my husband and I do our best to keep up with the myriad of meeting meetings that discuss and impact the future of Wellington. We found out about this meeting last week, and were surprised to hear that otherwise engaged residents didn't even know about it, let alone the hundreds of residents who haven't a clue that this process is going on at all. So, before you, there's a request to approve a plan that will impact and impede people's property rights, and is purported to have gone through a consultation process. Yet, it's something that many people in Wellington aren't even aware of. Even vaguely aware, I don't believe, they have been given the information they need to properly understand its consequences. This is inappropriate and frankly unjust. The plan is not a mission statement, it's prescriptive. As residents, we receive notices about all kinds of things. So, why wasn't a notice placed in the mailbox of 240 property owners who will be directly impacted by this plan, and let them have a voice in this process? Meaningful consultation is necessary, it's the proper thing to do, and it hasn't been done. If this committee intends to approve a plan with minimal consultation and input from the very residents that are directly impacted, it's all the more reason to get the plan right. There are over 200 property owners impacted by this plan. Some, and perhaps many, have no intentions of changing a thing about their properties in the foreseeable future. However, others could have, especially those who have purchased a ho-hum property with a vision and belief that they had an opportunity to develop something beautiful and contributing to the village of Wellington. I have yet to hear a good reason why those people should not realize their dreams. Yet, the very prescriptive policies and guidelines in the plan before you quashes those visions and opportunities. In summary, the concept of a heritage plan for Wellington is good, but this plan as purely drafted is not. It's not ready, it needs more work, it's overreaching on so many levels, its intentions and consequences need to be properly communicated to the property owners that it will impact, so that you, the decision-makers, have a clear understanding of their reactions to it. And if you're prepared to proceed without wider communication than input, then you have a responsibility to get it right, not just for the sake of heritage, but for the sake of ensuring the beauty and vibrancy of Wellington in the many years to come. I respectfully submit that this plan not be approved as drafted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments for the speaker? I see none. Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with us. We're going to move on to the next speaker. I have an Alyssa Lee registered. Alyssa Lee? Welcome, and thank you. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Sorry, this is my first time speaking, so, nice to meet all of you. I'm Alyssa Lee. I'm an owner with my husband of a commercial property in Wellington. 310, 312, you can probably see it being constructed currently as you drive by. I'm, all the theory, listening to all the theory of the HCD plan and how it's conceived and how it was like, put together, and all the legal aspects, and sort of like pointing out the points, I'm not that type of person. I'm a realist, I'm a practical person. I'm also a perfect example as somebody who actually invested in Wellington quite recently, and in a commercial property. And if you might ask yourself, why would I do such a thing? Why did I do such a thing? Sometimes I ask myself that question quite a lot, considering how hard it is. I don't have a business here, but I have invested in a festival called Big Lake Arts. It is important to me, that is my business, this is what I want to bring to the community. And that's why we bought the building, because that's going to be a part of that. And I don't see anybody, like, big developers, to be honest, when I, when I looked at that property, I had approached some developer friends of mine and asked them, would you buy that? Is this a good idea? Should I do this? Can you please advise me? They said, no freaking way, should you be doing that? And they said, and I said, why? It's beautiful, I love this town, this place is great, it's beautiful, it's amazing, it's got so much vibrancy, the people are amazing. Don't do it, they said. Why? You're not going to make enough money on it. That's the bottom line. And outsiders look at me and say, you're doing this, you're coming from the outside, you're going to invest in my village, I'm buying a property that's worth actually quite a lot of money, it's expensive, I'm putting a lot of money into that property, and I'm not going to make a lot of money. And if I crunch the numbers a lot, it's true, it's hard to make money, to make money off a commercial property. I'm doing it because I believe in this village, I'm doing it because I believe in my business, and I believe it will contribute to this place in a positive manner. And in order to make that happen, I need to have the flexibility to be able to also build upon that property that will actually make it viable. And currently, the way I understand this plan, and I'm not an expert, is it doesn't with the implementation of this plan. And to be honest, I think no big developers are going to come and pour the money into the core of the village. It will be small business owners like me risking their livelihood to invest in a property, and trust me, a lot of these buildings are in desperate need of repair. The building that I am currently restoring is rotting to the core, it is expensive, far more expensive to restore, to its heritage quality, which I am trying to do at the best of my possible, like, of what I can. I'm not tearing that thing down, but it would be a lot cheaper to tear it down. And I'm not, and the only people that would in the future want to invest in properties like that are people that will contribute to this community. It will be small business owners who will have a heck of a hard time actually making it render. And I really implore upon you to consider all the things and all the, all the things that everybody has been saying today, to actually get this really right. I am all for heritage, I'm all for preservation, I'm not tearing that thing... I'm not tearing that thing down, and I'm putting every single penny I have into that building to give to this community. And those are the people we want to attract in the future. And in order to attract them in the future, we have to give them allowance that is described in the secondary plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the speaker? There are none. Thank you very much for coming and sharing your concerns. Evan Nash is next on the list. Evan, are you here today?
Sure.
There you are. Come on up. You know the drill. Three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I feel like I should have a law degree to stand here, but I'm gonna go on anyway. So I hope everyone got a chance to see the letter that I sent around yesterday. I just want to clarify that the position of the Business Association in Wellington that was put forward by the Business Association is clearly outlined there. They are pushing for you to delay this decision because they don't feel that adequate, adequate sort of public input has been given. A lot of what the Business Association would sort of posit has been echoed by the people you've heard speaking here this afternoon. I'll just take my remainder of my time to suggest that we have meetings with all the BIAs, the Chamber of Commerce. We have little get-togethers where we sort of talk about the state of affairs. And everyone is watching very carefully to see what happens in Wellington over the next little while. Everybody wants to know what's going to happen with the new subdivision, with the beach, with the Heritage Conservation District. And so the question I have is, have the people who are not being represented by the people in the room today been considered, you know, have we considered the vulnerable people in our community? Have we considered what good contemporary urban planning is, what we've been doing in the past, and how we can use this opportunity to really get things right is sort of in front of us? And we could choose to ignore it right now and screw things up, or we really actually, for the first time in a long time, we've got some money, some time, and some people interested in making a difference. And, you know, we could fix some of the issues that we have in this community and the other communities around. And obviously, a huge part of that would be preserving the heritage that we have here, but also, you know, planning for sustainable growth that's environmentally friendly, that makes, you know, young families want to move here, et cetera. I would also suggest that if you look around this room, there's a lot of knowledge behind me right here. There's a lot of people willing to give you a bit of their time, and if you were to take advantage of that, you would probably end up with a very, very good plan. The last thing I will say is that I think you need to give careful consideration to overburdening the planning department. Michael, you've just been like working part-time lately. Hardly anything coming across your desk. As we all know, you know, there's a huge backup at the planning department. To place unfair burden on them is going to lead to mistakes. It's going to lead to poor planning, and it's going to lead to not the future that anybody in this room wants. Because I've seen what's been going on with this council. I've seen what's been going on with staff around the county for the last few years, and we're getting there. We are making good decisions that are taking us in the right direction, so why stop the train now? Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Questions or comments from committee? No, thank you. Thank you for joining us. William Cobbin is next. Are you here? Welcome. You know the drill. At this point, three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is William Cobbin. My wife and I have owned a home on Wellington Main Street for over 20 years. I've been coming out here for 20, almost 20 years before that, so I really have a strong sense of the county. And like our neighbors, we're proud residents and we're investors in this community that we love. So I'm just trying to give you a quick resident's view about what we're talking about today. Not a lawyer, just a resident who really cares for the village. And I don't have to tell you of the changes Wellington's gone through over the past decade, or the coming explosion of residential development. The 1,000 housing units immediately to our north, 200 housing units to the east, projections of 8,000 new residents in the coming decade, $100 million infrastructure upgrade, and of course, surging taxes to pay for it. It's a lot. And for us looking around, we see this wave all around us, and we know this many people, this many houses is sooner or later going to really impact on what is in fact a small village. So to say we're overwhelmed is a bit of an understatement. We almost feel embattled, and we're not quite sure we sort of have the protection we need. These hundreds of new homes will require vastly expanded commercial and retail services to support them. So the pressure on our little downtown, which basically strings along the main street, will be incredible. And we know that there's developers, large and small, eagerly planning to cash in on what they see as a coming retail bonanza. Bigger stores, large multi-use buildings, greater lot densities, parking for the thousands of new residents. But really, we're just a village of about 1,700 people. Our homes co-mingle with small shops, bistros, grocery store, hardware store, art shops, stretching side by side along the lake. So even though we have these different zones, we're actually all tied together. It's really hard to say, well, this is just a commercial zone, like maybe on the edges of Scarborough or something. We're mixed. So what happens next door, even if it's commercial or whatever, affects who's next door? The look is the same. You've got a house, and next you will have perhaps, you know, a big business. So we have to be super careful. And we are a special village.
30 seconds.
We're picturesque. We're a county gem. We're a must-visit destination. This is what the travel magazines say. And yet, we feel terribly vulnerable to what we see coming down the track. We're hearing delay. Delay is a worry for us. We really should support this bill that we're talking about, because I think it will offer the best protection we have.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from committee? Counselor Harper?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks, Bill. Just back to your point about the commercial. What's your feeling about how we should think about commercial in the downtown core, given the residential nature of it? I mean, are you accepting of commercial? And if so, what level of commercial, what type of commercial development feels appropriate for the Main Street?
Well, of course, we want commercial. And, you know, we want growth. We know we need growth. We've got a huge infrastructure we're going to have to pay for. We need the services of good retail. But it has to be in scale of our village. It's a small village. So what seems to be working best is small commercial businesses. You know, we don't need monster restaurants. We need bistros. We don't need big box stores. We need our local hardware store. So I think if all thinking for the form of commercial could be transposed to the size and scale of our village, I think it works very well. I think it integrates very well. Even if you have a residence next to a small business, it's much better than having a residence next to a four-story walk-up or a four-story residence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Dan Leeming next.
Am I allowed to make a comment?
No. Sorry. Thank you and welcome. Dan, you've got three minutes.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. I and my wife have been residents of Wellington for over 20 years. My background is I'm a professional planner, and I'm also a volunteer on a number of initiatives in Wellington. I've got four points. I'm going to go through them fairly quickly. My first one is due process. I've watched over the earlier background studies that were undertaken, started by the county, undertaken by Mr. Bray and Ms. Reed. That was a fair chunk of work, and then it stopped. And then there was consideration of, should we move forward with the Heritage Conservation District? The go-ahead started. That's been two and a half years. I actually served as a volunteer on the steering committee. So we're talking about a total time of six years just on that. In my opinion, due process has been followed. There have been information meetings, three public meetings mandated, just one was under the Planning Act, and all have been followed. In fact, the town and consultant team have carried on with one-on-one meetings with various residents in the BIA. I attended some of those meetings as well. Until very recently, there have been discussions, I believe, right up until yesterday, possibly even today, well beyond what they were asked to do. These studies go beyond the original terms of reference, and that's just trying to get it right. My second point, what is reasonable? The study embraces a very large area of Wellington, and yet, the focus of the issues we've been hearing is in a very relatively small area of the plan. I don't think that the specific interests of a few should be allowed to overrule the greater good of the broader community. I think the gap on issues, and we've all seen this happen, has narrowed greatly from the early days of the study and over the last six months. And I believe there is room for growth within the HCD. My third point, deferral. Let's not kid ourselves. Deferral is basically paramount to a denial of the HCD. You've got an election coming up. Soon, there will probably be a lame-duck council that really is not allowed to move on anything. It takes councils a while to get functioning. A new one probably won't be up and running and making decisions till February of next year. In 2023, we're talking about seven, eight months, council and staff are going to be inundated with very heavy demands on their time and their resources. With the recent approval of the Wellington--
Sorry, Dan, can you wrap up?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Wellington Bay Estates and Caitlin, they're not going to have time to come back to a study that took six years to do already. I'm just going to wrap up in saying investment. I keep hearing about investment. We all make investment. My neighbors and I have put a huge investment into rebuilding, maintaining homes and properties. The more important point is the investment that we also make in the community, where we shop, who we support, who do we volunteer for. So to me, the HCD is a fundamental building block. It's mandated under the secondary plan, and it's going to help to stabilize the elements of the older community as the new community doubles, triples, and quadruples around it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Counselor Harper?
Yes, Dan, a question?
Yes, stay put.
Thank you. So, Dan, you're a planner, and I'm assuming you've got 30 or more years experienced as a planner, working with developers, working with secondary plans, working with official plans, and HCD plans. I think what we heard from the three lawyers this afternoon is that the secondary plan is a sacred cow. It's not something we should talk about. We shouldn't change, that it's perfect the way it is. And I guess I'd like a professional take on your experience of secondary plans and the degree to which sometimes they do need to evolve, and in particular, in relation to an HCD, which the secondary plan suggests that we put in place.
The secondary plans do evolve. I've been involved in the creation of many secondary plans throughout Ontario and other parts of Canada. They laid the very important secondary-level groundwork of planning to deliver detail within the official plan. The HCD, it would have been great if the HCD had been done before the secondary plan got started, because it lays the groundwork, some very important groundwork. In fact, secondary plans are mandated to also include heritage as a component, and HCD actually provides that in spades. The current secondary plan, and I don't want to get out of my depth here, and I defer to Mr. Michio on this matter. The current secondary plan was undertaken some time ago. It anticipated a very large area of growth, and it predated the phenomenal pressure that we've seen in the last five, 10 years for growth in Wellington. If it was to be redone, it would probably be done in a different way. Secondary plans are amended. They're modified based on the need for change and what is happening within a municipality. I think the HCD needs to work with the secondary plan, but the secondary plan was very clear in laying out the groundwork that the HCD was needed. So we have an older secondary plan. We have a new HCD. There are certain overlapping components that contemplate and enable this to happen. So to me, the HCD, really, the amount of work that's gone into it, the research, the amount of negotiations and discussions on how to tweak it up, I think there's room there. I would be reticent to see it deferred.
Thank you.
Counselor Nyman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to follow up on that question, because I thought I heard you say both plans have to work together, and secondary plans do change. But in order for them to change, that has to come to council, the secondary plan, any amendment or anything. It just can't, you can't, or I guess I'm trying to understand, you can't make another plan that will go against that secondary plan without having changes made to that secondary plan?
Any change to a secondary plan have to come back to council. They have to go very rigorous. Staff, a few recommendations, public meetings. It's a big deal.
So the question is, you can't have another plan that goes against a secondary plan without changing the secondary plan to accommodate that other plan?
I'm not that familiar on the nuances of the plan and what is finally going to be decided on. The secondary plan laid the groundwork requiring that an HCD be undertaken. That work has been done. Now, if there needs to be modifications or amendments, that's up to staff and to you to decide how do we take this the final few yards.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further hands. Thank you very much for your contribution. I'd like to call Simon Fish regarding the same item. And I would like to, again, urge that we stick to the timelines, because we're going to possibly lose quorum at some point. Three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Then I'll hold back my remarks on the water tower and a few other matters then.
Thank you.
A bit soon, is it? Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name is Simon Fish. I'm a resident in the village of Wellington. We have a heritage home that lies within the proposed HCD, and it is considered one of the contributing properties. I have three points. First, let me say at the outset that the municipality, its staff, and its council are to be commended for this proposal. We, the electorate and the residents here, are often too quick to criticize council, wary of its intentions and uncharitable in our assessments, and that we may not have all of the facts and may not have spent any time familiarizing ourselves with the issues has not been an impediment to that. But this proposal deserves proper recognition for the thoughtful, deliberate, inclusive, objective, and even-handed process that I think you have followed by staff and its advisors and by the council, and it is most welcome. Secondly, it is now your duty, and forgive me for reminding you of this, it is your duty as counselors to promote the well-being and act in the interests of the municipality as a whole. The interests of the municipality as a whole are the operative words. Not my words, but the words from the legislation that apply to all municipalities across this country. Everything you do must be in pursuit of that duty, and you will fulfill that duty by approving the proposal that's in front of you this afternoon. To be clear, your duty is not to pander to the interests of the odd commercial developer-- developer motivated by their financial gain. You heard from my friends earlier that their concerns are the concerns of commercial developers. Just scratch a little bit the veneer of some of the platitudes, and you will have heard the words, you're not going to make enough money on it. Your duty is not to be distracted by the speculative concerns of the odd homemaker thinking about making alterations.
Thirty seconds.
You're, I wonder, Madam Chair, since I gave you a minute in saying some nice words about the about the committee, if you'd give me a minute on the back end?
You know what? Flattery doesn't work on me at all, but, you know, like, we'll give you the time you need to summarize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your duty is not to give primacy to the individual property rights over the collective rights of the community, and your duty is not to be cowered by a lawyer's letter written by chaucer in a menacing tone. Do not be distracted by these matters. Your duty is to the municipality as a home. And my final point, if I may, Madam Chair, much has been made of the provisions of the secondary plan. What is not mentioned, though, is that Section 7, subsection C of the plan directs the implementation of the HCD. It is because of the secondary plan that we're here today. The secondary plan deliberately gives gaps, leaves gaps that are to, that is to be filled by the HCD, and the proposal that you have in front of you does just that. And so, having followed a rigorous and thoughtful and deliberate process, this committee has the discretion, it has the authority to adopt the process, to adopt the proposal, and I urge you to do so today. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from committee? None, you're free to go.
Thank you.
Well done. Snuck it in under the last second. So is anyone else in attendance interested in speaking on this matter who did not register in advance? Please come on up. Thank you. As you've heard, you've, your limit is three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Diane Riley. I've been a resident of Wellington for more than twenty years, along with my husband, and I'd like to add my voice today in strong endorsement of the Heritage Conservation District. I, like many others, moved to Wellington because of its strong ties in appearance and feel to its history and spirit of place. I would like to ensure that it is preserved for the plans of, from the plans of developers, some of whom are not only not residents of Wellington, but do not even reside in the county. We want to ensure a healthy, livable community for all who live in our historic village. We have invested so very much, not just money, and I want to keep reiterating this point, it is not just about money. Surely COVID has taught us that by now. It is about quality of life and ensuring the future for all. In every respect, I support the plan because, first of all, due process has been followed. The process started in 2011. It has been going in full force for six years. It has been advertised and accessible to all with many public meetings and consultations. To say that you didn't hear about it, I'm sorry, then you must have had your your fingers in your ears. The secondary plan, as has been mentioned, endorses and in fact directs that there be a heritage plan, and I can direct you to that where it says, council shall implement the village design policies and plan by preparation and implementation of heritage conservation district plans. So it is directed to do so. To say you've read the secondary plan and know it well and not know that the plan was calling for another plan that would supersede it on the heritage side is disingenuous and, I would say, possibly even ludicrous, because it is quite clear, in fact, there are dozens of references in the secondary plan to the need for conservation of heritage and that there will be an upcoming heritage conservation district plan. I also refer to the county strategic plan, which is in direct support of a number of the county's other priorities regarding heritage, including, and I quote, "to maintain rural and historic character of the county through responsible planning principles and decision-making." The plan is for the heritage areas in support of village residents and the quality of life versus those of developers and money and total self-interest. I should also mention that, since there's been such quibbling about that, that guidelines are not rules. It is disingenuous and semantic gamery to say that they are. Wellington will not be frozen in the past. This plan, this heritage plan, gives new direction and avenues for creativity. Throughout Ontario, as in towns such as Creemore and Alora, the rest of Canada, and indeed the world, areas with heritage designation thrive and flourish with tourism, economic impact, and a strong sense of self-worth. For a developer to claim that they have no room for creativity under the heritage plan because they can only build two or three stories demonstrates a worrying reliance on quantity rather than quality and a distinct lack of vision.
Thirty seconds, Diane.
Thank you. And to reiterate, the role of council is to carry out the duties specified in its mandate to safeguard the well-being of county residents and to fulfill its directives under the strategic plan and Wellington's secondary plan. You and others have invested years, hours, time and money. If you fail now, you fail the residents of Wellington and you fail yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from committee? No, thank you very much. Is there anyone left in the room who was not registered but would wish to comment? Thank you. No, we're going to move on. Can I have someone to receive the comments from the audience? Thank you, councillor Princeton, seconded by councillor Nyman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Princeton, Nyman motioned that we now receive all the comments from the audience.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you, that carries. Thank you very much to all the members of this community who spoke during the comment section. We're going to move on to items for consideration now, beginning with item 7.1, which is very topical, because all of those comments related. I think councillor Harper wants to put that on the floor. Can I get a second or four him, please? Thank you, councillor McMahon.
Okay, thank you. And after I read the motion, Madam Chair, may I just, a quick couple of words and then turn it over to the rest of the committee?
Absolutely.
Thank you. It was councillor McMahon, it's my second, thank you. So Harper, McMahon, motion. The council received report DS 108-2022, the council adopted the Wellington Heritage Conservation District Plan, the Bray Heritage June 2022 Plan. The council passed a bylaw designating the Wellington Heritage Conservation District under Part 5, Section 41 of the Ontario Heritage Act, and for the council to direct staff to issue notice of passage of the bylaw as directed in Section 41.13 of the Ontario Heritage Act. I guess I'd like to say is, obviously, we've heard a lot today, a lot to digest. It's interesting coming into this, some of us on the committee have been working on some amendments to the plan to try to satisfy the the speakers today, and we think we have something, although it may not be appropriate to to try to approve that, but according to the our CAO, who is obviously one who oversees the process, we may, we may want to reconsider that, but I would like to be able to discuss at some point some of the thinking about the amendments and then see where we take it for the rest of the this portion of the meeting. So I'll leave it at that and turn it over to whoever would like to speak next.
Thank you. Other members of the committee, comments or questions? Okay, we've got councillor Hirsch next, and then councillor Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And councillor Marketson.
Thank you, councillor Marketson. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, as councillor Harper mentioned, a number of us, myself included, worked over the weekend, learning more about heritage than we had ever intended to in our lives. But as a member of the Heritage Advisory Committee, I had that obligation, I felt. And I'll just perhaps preface this with a little story. The the public meeting, which was held by Zoom on May the 5th, was a most remarkable meeting, because it heard very intelligent, cogent objections and concerns raised by many of the people who are with us in the room today. And I took away from that that we had to be very certain that we were doing the right thing in terms of impinging on people's property rights and and having some coordination between this HCD plan and the Wellington secondary plan. So a number of us working on this and consulting with Carl Bray have come up with some suggested improvements that I think in Section 3 of the HCD would levy those concerns and end up leaving ultimate control of decisions over things like demolition and building height and setbacks in the hands of council, as opposed to being overly prescriptive in the HCD itself. So I'm not sure what is the appropriate process, Madam Chair, to bring these forward. You said that the the CAO has some thoughts on this, maybe we should ask her how to do this.
So through the chair to councillor Hirsch, in a side conversation with councillor Harper, I was just pointing out that from a transparency perspective, this is very technical information, and this is going to impact the livelihood of a lot of people. So I think that it shouldn't be a motion with technical edits put on the floor now and discussed. I think a report should come back to council that explains the edits, if staff are also in support of whatever's been discussed over the weekend, I wasn't part of that. But I think that there should be a report brought back to council, and so the public can read it and understand what exactly is being proposed, and perhaps any other ideas that come forth for changes as a result of all the people who've provided comments here today. So I would recommend that if you have a technical amendment you want brought forward, that you refer this report to staff to bring back a a report. I don't guarantee it will be the July meeting of council, it might be the August meeting of council, depending on how complicated this is, and we have an extremely full agenda, we keep dropping items. So I will do my best to get it back here this summer, either the July or August, but I think that is a more transparent, fair way for the public to understand what you're proposing to change.
Thank you. Councillor Bullock is next, followed by councillor Marketson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got to address the two points here. First, with some commentary, then questions of staff and perhaps Mr. Bray, if that's appropriate. First of all, as far as people not knowing about this process, we've heard today that it's been going on for six years. We just went through a provincial election where I'm sure everybody in the province knew that there was an election, and only forty-three percent of people showed up to vote. So even with an opportunity, not everybody voices their concern. So that's my thoughts on that one. Generally speaking, my understanding of heritage conservation districts is it usually discusses the facades, the outside of buildings, not so much the inside, but here we're discussing height and area, which goes beyond that. And and we did hear some concerns about that today, which I think it would be appropriate to refer back to staff to see if we can incorporate some of those suggestions in We want a plan that provides both certainty for people, but flexibility, especially flexibility to deal with unintended consequences, and I think that's, that would be my ask for staff, to see if we can modify the wording of this to to be able to do that. So in that vein, some of the concerns that we had about that inflexibility, I don't know if staff or or Mr. Bray, if it'd be appropriate for them to comment on that, whether that's fairly simply incorporated into this draft, or we could just wait until the the staff report comes through, but I invite through you, Madam Chair, for comments.
Certainly. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Sure, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Through you, councillor Bullock. Indeed, we heard that there's a number of issues shall versus should. If indeed those are the main issues from Mr. Callahan, if I'm correct, then then perhaps we could, through Mr. Bray and I, we could meet with Mr. Callahan and and quickly go through those and and find out why it might be shall and why it might be should, and come back, as CAO Wallace indicated, with another report indicating what what changes we've made and why. We also have the ability to post any changes on the website so that people have access to that in advance of bringing any document back to council for its review.
Thank you. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marketson? From the car?
Can you hear me now, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, if I could.
Now we're losing you. Hang on, can you hear me?
Can you read your lips?
Yes.
Okay, now I can hear you again.
Started, started with the last, started with the last Heritage Committee. Staff came up with a boundary for an HCD that's almost identical to what the consultant came up with prior to any consult. So I just don't, I want, I want to ensure that there's been continuity between staff and consultant on that part. Is it, is the vocal okay?
Not bad. We're struggling to listen, but I think we can piece it together. Am I correct, committee? Keep going, do, I'll stop.
I don't want to, I don't want to dismiss the concerns, but I feel that we need to have strong heritage policies, although it's always about balance. And I think council will recognize that ultimately they will be the decision-makers, and the Ontario Heritage Act allows appeal from P-hac to council and then to the tribunal if necessary. And that, that's all I wanted to say, that's all I can say in this forum. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And are there, and we've got, I believe, councillor Harper?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I thought, take the mystery out of the proposed amendments, just to put it on the floor so that my fellow committee members can reflect on it and we can discuss it and to see, you know, how we feel about it and give staff a chance to to hear as well, as, obviously as well as the the audience that's here. So somebody referenced earlier, very, very important section, the meat of this whole document really is is Section 3, and it starts with Section 3.3, and the the core of this one basically is that a demolition of a contributing property isn't permitted unless there's a problem with the health and safety of the building. And we understand that, as Richard has talked about, there may be a circumstance where he'd like to, even though he has a a humble contributing property, he may still feel there's some value to obviously himself, but perhaps even the community in in deviating from that. And so with that in mind, the sort of thing that we're thinking about is a mechanism that would allow for that proposal to be considered. So for example, something along, you know, the lines of if the owner of a contributing property situated in the HCD proposes to demolish or remove any building or structure, that a heritage permit with supporting rationale of a heritage impact assessment shall be required, along with consultation. So there is that sort of thinking that's going along to to speak to Mr. Lemke's issue, which is essentially he's stuck with a, was not stuck with, he's stuck with a nice piece of property, but he has a very large lot with a small building, he'd like to max out what he can do with that property. So that's a setback issue. So in 3.5B, we would, for example, have something along the lines of where deviations from this policy regarding front yard setback are proposed, a heritage permit with supporting rationale, which may include a heritage impact assessment, shall be required. So we're really looking at creating ultimately some kind of a mechanism that recognizes special circumstances, because we understand that under the secondary plan, they've been granted certain rights and expectations, and we wouldn't take that lightly. We would want to work with you. So really, what we're talking about here is the need to ensure that there's a mechanism there for those special circumstances, and I think that's the point that I just want to pass on for those who are on the horseshoe to comment on as you see fit.
So now, councillor Harper, I'm not entirely clear.
That's a conversation starter.
Okay. Thank you, conversation starter. Okay, so anyone who's not had a chance to talk, would you like to speak in round one? Mayor Ferguson, you were on the fence about putting your hand up, go for it.
No, I wasn't actually, but-
But yeah, just let me add my two cents here. There appears to be a willingness on the part of everybody we've heard from, well, everybody that's at this meeting, a willingness to discuss the plan further. I have heard no one say that this is, they don't, they disagree with the plan entirely. But there have been numerous comments about making sure that we get this right. So I'm, you know, what Counselor Hirsch is proposing is to send this back to staff. Staff come back with a report. Consultation occur between the parties, I think, is an appropriate thing to do. And if Counselor Hirsch moves that forward, I will second it.
Okay. So round two. Who had their hand up? Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I will certainly make that motion along the lines of what the CEO suggested, that we refer this back to staff for consultation and a report coming forward, addressing the concerns raised at this meeting. But absolutely, we have to get this done in this term of council. It can't slide past the summer.
So you're making this motion?
I'll make that motion. And if the mayor wants to be my second, that's fine.
Happy to second that, Counselor Hirsch.
Okay. So it is duly seconded. Comments regarding?
Madam Clerk has something to say.
Through you, Madam Chair, if I may. I do have a referral motion written and it is in the spirit of what Counselor Hirsch said. If I could read it out loud?
That would be wonderful.
So it says that the Wellington Heritage Conservation District Plan be referred to staff to address the public comments and the proposed Part C amendments to a summer council meeting.
Thank you. So Counselor Hirsch is nodding in agreement. And I believe the seconder is giving a thumbs up. So just related to this referral, any comments or questions? And I'm going to look to Counselor Margatson in the car. I don't see a hand up and I don't see him going on video. Oh, I think. There we go. All, so it's on the floor, all in favor. And that carries. Okay. Thank you very much. Can I get someone to put item 7.2 on the floor, the report from Development Services? Thank you, Counselor Prinsen. Counselor Nyman seconding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Prinsen, Nyman motion that council receive report DS-110-2022 and to that council approve the proposed sign for the bulk barn on 97 Picton Main Street as submitted on the signed permit.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions from committee? I see no hands, all in favor. And that carries. So item 7.3, the asset management plan from Corporate and Legislative Services. Can someone please put that on the floor for me? Thank you, Counselor McMahon. Who will second it? Thank you, Counselor Prinsen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. McMahon, Prinsen motion that council receive report CLS-25-2022 and that council approve the 2022 assessment asset, asset management plan, Core Linear Infrastructure.
Thank you. And we've got, we've got Director Ann McNichol at the podium for a very, very brief comment or summary.
Through the chair to members of council, I'd just like to say thank you. And it's actually nice to be in person rather than, than on Zoom. First off, I'd just like to say thank you to some of the staff members that have taken part in this. If you, if you look at who's been involved in the overall process, there's been everybody from GIS to finance to, to project managers. So it's sort of been a group effort to pull this together. So we started off, I guess it was about six months ago, with the Strategic Asset Management Plan Policy that we brought forward to council in January. And that was sort of the beginning of the journey for, for an overall asset management plan program for, for the county. We made the policy more robust. We added additional items such as an environmental consideration as well as climate change consideration in, in the scope, the policy statement, as well as some of the definitions. And that was a good precursor to where we're at now. So this asset management plan update is in conformance with OREG 58817. And it's just based on our core assets. Our core assets being water, wastewater, roads and bridges. So we've, we spent the last three or four months pulling the information together to develop. Oh, that's okay. To, to sort of develop this in conformance with, with OREG 58817. The next steps, we're going to move forward to developing a roadmap for the next several years for updating our asset management plan. That includes, over the next year, we were successful on an FCM grant. Director Cowan applied for about a year ago. And that we're going to work on over the next year, working on strengthening everything from life cycle, life cycle maintenance as well as our condition, as well as our levels of service. And then from that, there will be another presentation to council on the next update, July 1 of next year. And then we'll move into yearly updates according to the OREG, which is July 1 of 2024 and July 1 of 2025. And then it'll just, it'll just continue on in basically perpetuity as this is a living document and it'll need to be updated from that point onward.
Thank you. So in short, this is the first of many reports.
Yes.
This gets us that initial inventory and we have the, the sort of more technically useful pieces will fall into place as the, as the years progress, the next couple of years progress, the sort of ability to do some cost benefit analyses, et cetera. So those are yet to come.
Yes.
And, and the further inventories of our assets. Okay. Thank you. So to the floor, Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Erin. This is, this is an excellent report. I think it's an excellent plan. But it's a really frightening situation too, when you look at the dollar signs. I think the data that has been compiled is, is great stuff, much of which we really haven't seen before. You know, how to analyze different types of roads, different sections of roads, the different bridges and different structures and what their lifespan is and should be and what it's going to cost to maintain them and replace them. But when you see, and, and keep in mind, this is just the linear structure. This plan is just the linear structure. This is the roads and the pipes under the ground. That's not all the rest of our assets. That comes in the subsequent years of asset management planning. So you find the simple statement that on average, it's going to cost sixteen point eight million dollars in today's dollars to, of expenditures to maintain these structures. Well, that's a number that we don't have. And when you look at the breakdown of the dollars, they're all numbers that we don't have. So while it's a great plan, we're going to really struggle, I think, with how to, how to carry out the appropriate construction and maintenance of all our assets. But I mean, we have no choice. We need to have this information. The public needs to understand what the requirements are to actually build and maintain our infrastructure. And so it's a great document, but a frightening one. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the report. At least, at least now we've got a start. I would call this a pre-planning.
Yes.
Because, I mean, there's still, still much to be, to be filled out on this. And I would really, I look forward to the, to the time when we have a meaningful road mapping of our, of our assets. And I just, my question is, in Phase Two, within this, the plan for core assets must also include current levels of service and the cost to maintain these levels. Now, I would suggest that a, there is a lot of constituents that would, are not happy with our current level of, of maintenance, particularly on our roads. So how do we, as we go forward, how do we adjust that? How do we, once we implement this, come up with a, a more realistic, a better level of service on our roads? Especially, I mean, you talk about some of our, our paved roads, but when it comes to our local roads that are not, I mean, the level of detail in this is not great on those, on those particular roads. But it is the number one call, the number one complaint is on the level of service on our, of our roads.
Through the chair to Counselor Maynard. I think that, I think for levels of service, I think this was just a start and it mirrors exactly what's in OREG 58817. I think moving forward, we're going to actually add a number of different levels of service. For example, how legislatively, how long it takes to fill potholes, how long it takes to fix streetlights. And I think we'll be adding additional levels of service as we move on during this process. And then ultimately, that levels of, that level of service that council decides upon will be reported on a yearly basis to council. So that council will be able to see that if it, if legislation dictates that we fix a pothole, let's say in five days or 10 days, and it's taking 15 days, why is that? Does it have to do with, has to do with finance? Does it have to do with staffing? The other piece of the puzzle is life cycle management strategies. Now, we've indicated our current life cycle strategies that we're currently working on now on our roads. The idea is to create other life cycle strategies that actually avoid costs. So that life cycle strategy section will be worked on and refined so that we'll be able to provide council with, this is what we're doing, this is what we sort of should be doing based on benchmarking, and this is the cost that we're going to avoid. So I think adding additional levels of services and reporting on them and then adding additional life cycle management strategies to the roads will both help.
Could I have a brief follow-up? So in your estimation, how long before we see this having a meaningful impact on what comes before us in budget so that people really get a good idea? So we really tell people the, the truths that many probably do not want to hear about what it's going to cost each year and that that gets brought to us in budget so they're not, we're not haggling over, you know, a hundred thousand dollars here or there to try and get more money into the roads budget? How long before we, this will make a true impact and what staff brings forward to the budget?
Through, through the chair to Counselor Maynard. I think relatively soon and definitely the budget, during the budget process this year. So the intent is over the next month, we have the solid core asset data. It's in an Excel spreadsheet. The intent is to upload that into our asset management repository. And then from there, we can assign, we have condition, we have replacement cost, we have useful life, then we can assign certain values, percentages on priorities of council as well as risk. So it has a, basically a priority matrix built into it. And then we should be able to run capital plans so that when it gets to the budget time, that it identifies with limited resources. It should identify which roads or which wastewater, water mains, wastewater mains should be replaced for the best bang for your buck. And to follow that up over the next couple of years, there should, we should be getting decision support software, optimization software. So rather than looking at an individual asset class, it'll actually look at various asset classes at once. So if you've got a million dollars, it will show you the decision support software where best you can spend that in proportion to water, wastewater, roads. So certainly in the interim, we will have something uploaded into citywide, probably for the, for the budget process. So we should have some raw data that we'll be able to work with on our core assets. The other assets are going to come forward at another time.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Forster.
Just looking at page 153 of the summary here. When I look at replacement costs, that we're now approaching the billion dollar mark?
Yes.
Is that today's dollars or six months ago's dollars? And what I asked, because we know we've had a few projects that have come in that were five million dollars that are eight million dollars now. So is this, how close are we on this or is there another 20% on top of this?
Through the, through the chair to Counselor Forster. I think it's fairly close. It was based on the best available information that we had at the time. So we utilized, in some cases, data from recent projects that we worked on. And then we actually used inflation factors. For example, this may be hard to believe, but our construction index, our NRB CPI is actually at seventeen percent year over year right now. So that basically says all, all projects that don't fit into a traditional CPI are up seventeen percent. So this should be a fair representation of COVID numbers in there right now. And keep in mind that that's not including facilities, sidewalks, streetlights and the rest of it. So it is over a billion dollars and I think it is fairly representative of what would, we would need to replace all of the assets.
Yes. Just from a council standpoint, makes it a little challenging when you're putting anywhere from six million to fifteen million dollars into this whole package and how do we get there? So something to think about for the next term, anyway.
Thank you. Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can support, I'll support this because I know how important it is and many municipalities are using this system right now. So it will set the, the capital budgets going forward, once everything is identified. It's very complicated because if you do maintenance on anything that extends the life of the asset, it could move it to, if it's a 20-year lifespan and you do maintenance on it, they give you the extra five or 10, now it's out there a little further. So you take a road that if you've done some maintenance on it, that now instead of 10 years could be out there 15 years. So it's a good tool and it's one that will help not only staff but council going forward in setting the, the capital budgets. Because a lot depends on the life cycle of things and the maintenance that you put on, on it. It's just very, very in-depth. So this will guide everybody along going forward.
Thank you for those comments. Any further hands up for round one? Counselor Bullock.
Thank you. To sort of continue on, on those comments about maintenance, sort of preserving life, I'm, I'm looking at page 200 of the report, which, 200 of our agenda, which is 3.3 of the report, Table 3.1, that looks at the expenditure forecast. And there's a couple of things there that I'm looking at that make me a little skeptical about the numbers. I know we have an upfront loading of, in the mid 30s for this year, next year, and then dropping down to 3.9 million in 2031. I don't know if anyone here can actually believe that, looking at the state of our roads. But one thing that concerns me, especially on the maintenance side, we spent a lot of money on 33 in the last year or two on crack sealing. And certainly crack sealing is one of the major maintenance points of maintaining hard-surfaced roads. And I see that there's no money forecast for this year. And I would suggest that $364 forecast for next year, that's not even enough money to get a crew down to a site, let alone do any work. I think we could spend more than $364 on the cracks on the road in front of my property. I have noted that County Road 3, the east end, that newly built portion, there's hundreds of feet of longitudinal cracking already in that road. We're going to need a heck of a lot more if we want to preserve those assets than $364 every other year. Microservicing, I believe we had a report here saying that was a great way of maintaining things, yet we're looking at one to $4,000 there. Single surface reservicing, we've done a lot of work this year, I think more than $5,000. And it's great stuff, but it has to be done on a regular basis. So these numbers, I see single surfacing this year, 5,000, next year, nothing, and then climbing steadily into, you know, up to a million point two in 2029. So I know that these numbers were arrived at by a contractor doing this report for us with some input. So I just would invite staff to give us some comments on this and perhaps give me a little more confidence, although some of these numbers might be difficult to do.
Sure. Through the chair to Counselor Bullock. Director Gohine did identify that as well and I did talk with Watson about that. That information all came from Street Scan, which was done in 2021. And we also received the information on the condition and, and the replacement cost from Street Scan to, to continue with the consistency of the data. It was left for now, but identified to be refined at a later date. So we kept the information that we received from Street Scan during the 2021 because it was tied directly to the condition and the replacement values that were done during that project. So when, when, and Director Gohine said these will need to be, will need to be refined moving forward as we go to the next phase. So we have identified that. But we didn't have time and nor did Watson think that we should change those right now. Those were the numbers that we were receiving. think that we should change those right now. Those were the numbers that we were received from StreetScan, and those were tied to the actual condition and some of the other numbers that were used earlier on in the plan. So that was, those numbers do need to be refined, for sure. You know, $1,600 for micro-surface and crack seal 364, obviously it's going to be much higher than that. But we changed these numbers, and then condition changes in the report changes. So for now, we left it in for consistency of data.
Okay, just quick follow-up?
Quickly.
So I guess the, I guess the end, end result is that seeing that the bulk of the next couple of years of our expenditures are in reconstruction, which is going to be something that needs to be done, that our estimates are going to be significantly higher than what we see here.
Yes, I would definitely say so. And given the limited amount of resources that we do have, I think that's why it's imperative to get some of this data within Citywide, so that when you're given a limited amount of money, we can produce a report to say how best the money is spent. But certainly on an operational level, those will have to be increased for the budget process, yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Forster.
Well, just listening to some of the comments we've had here, listening to reconstructing roads, I guess there's going to be two questions here. It almost made me, just trying to grasp this, that I would have to, if I'm trying to figure this out, I'm thinking just off the top of my head now, that I might have to go into a purely maintenance mode, where trying to keep things patched as we have been in the last few years. And I'm not expecting to have an answer, because I don't think there is one here. And I guess I'd ask Marcia here, have we started to look at any sort of financial model that would even come close to dealing with this in the next, you know, I heard Brad talk about 20 years, 30 years, but I'm looking, just roughly looking at these numbers, I'm not looking at 20, 30 years, I'm looking at 50 to 100 years for any sort of a way to even come close to paying for this sort of stuff. You know, we're putting, again, $5 to $15 million a year, divide that into $1 billion. It comes out pretty quickly that what we're doing, patchwork alone will not, will not just fix the problem. Doing major reconstruction and taking up large chunks of money will not fix this problem. I think it has to be identified, what is the long-term plan? How do we even come close to identifying the amount of money that will be required and putting that into a budget, so that when people are sitting around this table here, with this year's budget coming up and the next term of council, that they can even pass this on to the general public and say, this is what will be required, because it's a challenge that's almost impossible to do. So I guess I'm just looking, is there, is this is what we're going to be looking at, some sort of financial model that gets us anywhere close to doing this?
So through the chair to Counselor Forster, I mean, there's no magic eight ball for this. It's not like if we put it in a special model, we'll figure out a perfect answer. And I mean, what this report shows you is that there is a chronic issue, it puts numbers to what all of you and most of the residents that we speak to will all attest to living here, that the roads are in rough shape. You'll notice this report says that we score average, or our average score is fair. Well, I don't think I could find a resident who would describe our road condition as fair. So I think that what we, what this tells us is that expectations do not match the basic numbers that this report says we have to put into it, and this report is asking for more money than we have. So I think that we are, our plan, and it goes to the question that Counselor Maynard asked about how this would connect to budget, what we are doing as a leadership team is looking at our planned capital expenditures and our existing forecasted five-year capital plan, seeing what we had planned, how does that relate to this data where it says what is our worst situation? And we will be coming back to budget with a much more aggressive proposal. It's either we change the level of service in some of these areas and expect less, or change the type of road, or, I mean, there's, there's just not an endless opportunity of solutions here. We are, some of these might be candidates for grant funding, but there is no federal provincial program as of yet announced. Maybe there will be something by the end of budget, but if we're lucky, that's one road. So there's, there is a big piece of this. We know there's a lot of growth coming here, that's going to be a lot more tax revenue, but they create new needs that pushes other things, so you can't just use tax growth as a way to pay for everything. It adds more taxes, but they also have a lot more needs, and they put more pressure, more people puts more pressure on, on roads and other kinds of services. So yeah, it is not a, it is not a happy picture. It is very similar to every municipality that is small, rural in nature. It's a very common problem. We have a particularly difficult one, since most of our roads are locally maintained and have a lot of traffic on them, given the way our population pattern and business pattern is laid out in the county. It's not like it's a spine running through largely empty spaces. So, so yeah, we have a lot of roads to spread it around. So, so yeah, there is no, there is no big master plan. What we're using this data is to try and make better informed decisions when we come to budget, and, and look at what our capital options are. And if the next council isn't prepared to, we'll give some options on how to do it, and if the next council isn't prepared for that, then we need to have a different conversation about service expectations. And one of the things we're talking about is having a conversation prior to budget that allows us to get some direction from council before the numbers all land. So to make sure we're on the right track in terms of relative trade-offs or expectations for what the impact to the levy might be, or, you know, some, some basic direction. It's a very common thing to do that sort of mid-year in a municipality, in a larger, more busy municipality, would have a mid-year capital conversation to set some direction for staff when they go off and spend four to six months developing a budget. In this case, we'll have a new council, so we'll do it just before. But I see us having more regular conversations with council to make the asset management plan a lived document in terms of what those choices might be and how council wants to direct staff to bring forward options.
Thank you for putting that as delicately as possible.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to follow up on CIO Walsh's, with noticeably absent in this actual plan is a financial strategy, which typically you'll see in every asset management plan. That wasn't a requirement of OREG 58817. So the financing strategy will come at a further date. That includes development charges, reserves, it could include a special infrastructure levy that some municipalities faced with this type of infrastructure deficit are actually levying on, on the residents as well, in addition to the regular. So there are a number of ways that you can sort of combat this type of infrastructure deficit, and that strategy will come forward in the actual next, next update next year.
Thank you. Anything further from committee?
Yes.
Counselor Maynard?
Thank you. So I would agree that the StreetScan certainly will need to be refined, because there must be a few very good roads out there that are bringing the average up for the, for the predominance of very bad roads. So that, I'm glad that that will be refined. And just a question, on that same, the same chart with the life expenditure forecast for roads, where do the local roads or our concession or cross, you know, what now would be surface-treated roads? Because they're not, they're not LC, is that the LCB roads?
Yeah, low-class bitimous, yeah, that's the LCB, will be the surface treatment, and then the HCB is actually the, the hardtop, the asphalt.
Okay, so even though they may not have any, any surface left on them, okay. So that amount is, you know, just the, for the public, for staff, for those that are around council now, and those that may be on council next time, I mean, we are going to have to, there's no simple answer, and we're never going to have perfect roads, but we really need, we're going to have to find a way to dramatically increase our resources to address, to address the condition of our roads. Like, this is not tenable any longer. If you're replacing the front end in your car, then any tax savings you might have are gone, right? And it's just making this community somewhat unlivable to be able to, so, just a, just a shout out to, to staff to at least bring us back something that is, is realistic in what we need to at least, at least hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments?
I was going to say.
Okay, so it's on the floor. Oh, you have a further?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Call the vote? Let's call the vote. Let's vote. All in favor. That carries, thank you. So now everyone, we've come to everyone's favorite moment. And as per section 12.6, subsection 12 of the procedural bylaw, I have to take leave his chair, and I would like to ask Counselor Harper if he can step in his chair for this item and this item alone? Okay, and I'm going to put this item on the floor if I can get a seconder. Do I have a seconder? Thank you. Oh, sorry, I'm still chairing.
No, that's fine. Yes, so.
It's a habit now.
Record notes that Counselor Hirsch is seconding Counselor McNaughton. Want to put that on the floor, Counselor McNaughton?
Thank you, yes. So this is the McNaughton-Hirsch motion that council, in order to foster a more inclusive local government during the electoral nomination period, and to bring council remuneration closer to the region's livable wage, set the compensation for members of council as follows effective January 1, 2023. The council set the compensation for a position of municipal councillor for 2023 at $35,300, and that council direct staff to include this in the proposed 2023 operating budget, and that council direct staff to include the following during the 2023 review of the council remuneration adjustment policy, that the full review of council and mayoral compensation include a livable wage lens and an equity diversity and inclusion lens, and that the new policy appoints a final date by which each current council will have set the base rate and terms of compensation for successive terms, for the successive term of council, and that this date fall before the electoral nomination period. And.
Yes, you may speak first.
Thank you. So, and I'm not going to talk about how we got here with what I would classify as a motion to improve our democratic, democratic presence. And I, I see it as a bit of a democratic emergency, which I think you all know. And there have been a lot of, a few discussions with staff members along the way, as it, as it did come forward sort of late in the game. The reason I am bringing this forward right now is to remove barriers for, to create the possibility of a more diverse council. And with the organization represent that I've been working with, my area of focus has primarily but not entirely been women, but certainly also young people, working people, people with young families, and the barriers that they continue to face when considering public life. But by younger people, I actually mean working people. I don't necessarily mean younger, I just mean people who, who rely on their full-time income. And when I talk with them, answering their questions about the demands of the job, and other former councillors answering their questions about the demands of the job, which is not five or six hours a week anymore the way it might have been in the past, it's become very apparent that, that there is, based on what they have said, that there is a barrier to entry for anyone who doesn't have some source of wealth, some source of consistent income that is reliable, or a very supportive employment situation that includes holiday time, and sufficient, reliable, and in their control means to actually be able to step into this role. Talking to women, and young men, and people with families, and certainly from my own experience, there can be a financial hit, and it's actually come up around this table in our discussions in September, from, from another councillor, that there can be a financial hit when the time required to do the job properly and compensation don't align. And this creates a state that we have right now where we have some notable homogeneity at this table, and during the 2018 field of candidates. So, and that's, that's not directed at an individual, that's not any individual's problem, or any individual's fault, or anything, you know, about an individual. It is how, how the structure is built, that it excludes people who don't have the means, and don't, or don't have the reliable employment support. So we can take that barrier away with a vote. And when I look at our, when I look at our comparators, which we were not provided in this term of council, it's, it's sort of hard to do because the county doesn't look like other communities. But we have a number of, but we have, you know, an unusual situation, we're a very small community, but we have a city structure, and we have city responsibilities as a single tier. So it's similar to a separated city or a single-tier municipality. We're not a township. So some of our comparators are townships, our better comparators are other single-tier or separated city municipalities. When I did a scan of them, our neighbors and better comparators, particularly Norfolk and Brant, which were identified by our consultants as, as good comparators, they're not bad, and their take-home is significantly more than ours. I believe $43,000 in one case, $33,000 in the other, including, and the other $33,000, I believe, also comes with between $2,000 and $4,000 in benefits and other stipends. The lowest take-home for those types of comparators, single-tier comparators with populations sort of not way far off, they're larger than us, but not crazy far off, are around, all hover around that area. The lowest, I believe, was $35,000. If we look at Haldeman, which is a fairly decent comparator, but, but a bit bigger, they actually get $56,000 for the exact same job. And we can look at Coeur d'Alene's as well, they're a bit too big to be an adequate comparator, but the job is the same. So then, if you look at townships, aside from that, we've got two neighboring townships, they are paid the same or more than us, and they do about 70% of the job. So in fact, Coburg, with all the benefits that they receive, they receive upward, upwards of $6,000 more than we do in total. There are some comparators that are slightly lower, like our neighbor Napany, but once again, that's a township, and it's a much smaller community. So it, we, just to begin with, I don't think we're honoring this job, but that's another conversation. What I'm concerned about is access to entry so that anyone can enter. I know this is not a popular topic, I know it's difficult. It's, but I, I'll say it here, if, if we cannot open the doors for a broader group, we don't really have a government that is representational. We have a bit of a ruling class, and that is, that excludes a lot of people who are impacted by our decisions, including renters, including people with hourly wages that, you know, that they need to live. And I believe we can do better for relatively little money, when you compare it to, to the size of our budget. We can open a lot of doors for 0.3% of our budget.
Okay, so why don't we open up to the floor? Counselor Nyman will start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to ask maybe Madam Clerk, because a comment was made, and I don't know how to go about asking this question, but, so I'll ask you, that around this table, it was mentioned that we're paying money, it's costing us money. And I'm just trying to figure out, because I never had that conversation, I don't remember that conversation ever being around the horseshoe here. And if it's conversations that happen in private, you can't include all of council, I don't think, because I know it's, it's not costing me money to sit here. I'm just wondering, how can that comment be made, I guess?
Point of clarification?
So I believe the clerk's been asked a question?
Well, it wasn't said.
Do you remember that conversation, or like, I guess, or maybe you can go to Counselor McNaughton, but I just don't remember that conversation happening. Just.
Yeah, just, if you could, quickly, so we can get the rest of the folks going on listening.
Are you referring to?
Are you referring to?
The comment that you made that it's costing, somebody made a comment, it's costing them money to sit here.
Ah, okay. So I can speak to that. Yes. So I believe you were at that meeting. It was the September meeting where we discussed the remuneration for, for 2022 and we passed a motion regarding 2022 pay. Counsel St. Jean made a comment that said, being part of this council takes time away from his business. I don't believe the exact, I recall the exact specifics, but he said something to the effect of, it, it costs his business profit, but he's unfortunately not here today.
Okay. Counsel Forrester.
Thank you.
And then, and then Counsel Princeton.
This is a little disappointing in a lot of ways. I guess I fall into that class. I'm a 62-year-old male. I'm not privileged. I started as an 18-year-old making $5 an hour. It's nothing for me to work 16 to 18 hours a day, even now. I make time. I would not like to be discounted because of my age or my color or my background. I think there's a lot of people who sit around this table who came into this position or were talking to it to give back to the community that's given so much to them over the years. But it seems like these days, that's not good enough. I don't want to be cut off here. It's been a privilege for me to serve my community, to work hard every day and try to help people. And that, it seems like these days, that's being discounted and that this is about money. The last thing I would like to see this job become down the future is for us to have professional counselors to say, you know what, I'm going to do this because I can make a good living at this. We already see this at the federal level and we already see this at the provincial level. I sure don't want to see it at the municipal level. And I could talk about this for a long time, but I'm going to leave it at that. It's just, it's getting really sad these days that the, the people who get this job, it shouldn't matter whether you're young, old, white, black, yellow, pink, purple, it should be because you're the most qualified. It's because you've went out there and knocked on doors and talked to people and they've made the choice to vote you in. Period.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Princeton, followed by Counsel Maynard.
Thank you, Counsel Harper. And I, I just, Counsel Forrester took some, I feel, I feel insulted that I'm, don't qualify under Counsel McNautin's as somebody should be sitting around this table. I feel, I feel offended, truthfully. And like I just, I'm not really sure what, if, if I didn't get paid $1, I would sit at this table. And I'm not doing it for the money. I'm doing it for the community. So the last time I went to Wellington Town Hall to sign up, the door was open. The door is open for every member of this community to run. The door is open. And as Counsel Forrester, I'm not going to repeat everything he says, but Counsel McNautin, I am offended from your description of the people sitting around this table. And, and I, I don't know what more to say without getting angry and making it an embarrassment. So I'll stop with that.
May I address that?
We're going to go, we're going to get Counsel Maynard. We'll just get some other comments around the table, I think is the appropriate thing. Counsel Maynard's next.
Okay. Well, this is quite a different job than I started 12 years ago. And this is an extension of, I always considered it somewhat as an extension of my volunteer work to the community. And when I, you know, had a young teenage daughter and was working full-time, I could manage just barely, but this, the complexity of what we do now has, is, is much greater than it was 12 years ago. And I know that when I try and, you know, try and help people to, you know, that I think might maybe, you know, be able to, to, to step into this, to step into this role, because none of us can do it forever, the, the idea of the compensation is, is a factor, especially for women that are, you know, that have many other commitments and are, are also working. I don't, I'm, I'm surprised that we didn't see at the end of this term of council, a, a review of, of counselors' pay, which would have been, would have been typical. I don't know as to whether I can support the going all the way to the 35 something, but I think that there should be, I think there should be a reasonable, a reasonable increase because you only have to look at her, you only have to look at her comparators to, to decide that. And I mean, we, we have no, we really, we don't have any staff. We don't have office space. I mean, our homes look like a, you know, a disaster area with, with paperwork. I calculate that I probably, on an average, over, in a week, I'm probably spending 30 hours doing this job, considering all my, my extra committee work, my phone calls. And even when I'm at my part-time paying job, right, this morning, three, you know, text, phone calls from constituents, this is a, this is pretty close to being a, a full-time job. And I think to attract diverse, good candidates that, that maybe we do have to consider paying a little more. And I would suggest that we should be probably, whether we get it in, in this term or not, we should have a, a report from staff and at the appropriate time, we'll see how things go. But I would like to see, we, we need to have a, a staff report on, on, on council, on council remuneration based on, based on our comparators. Coortha Lakes, $48,000 a year. Now, yes, they have fewer counselors because they know that's what everybody's going to say, but if you translate that on a per counselor basis, that brings us, that brings us down to about the, the $30,000 level. So there's a single-tier predominantly rural community that is paying its counselors 48,000 and most of them, most municipalities our size are also including benefits, which is also an attraction to some, to some people.
Counsel Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. I think the proposal as it is, I will agree, it's very divisive and the suggestion that the people sitting around this horseshoe are the wrong people to be sitting around this horseshoe. That said, understand that as a number of you've already said, this is not a job, right? This is something we do in our lives voluntarily on top of the rest of our lives and it's a service to the community. Yes, we do get a certain level of remuneration and I know people have said they can make more money elsewhere, but that's the nature of service to the community. And what we're trying to do is people put themselves out there. I've been encouraging people to run for the next council and not one of them have said it doesn't pay enough. Their concerns are being things like being personally attacked in the press, not perhaps having the qualifications to adequately do the job. Those are the things that I'm hearing are keeping people from doing this. Some of them say it's too much time, but none of them say it's not enough money. And considering the timing is everything, to bring this up just before we go into an election cycle, in the middle of the highest inflation rate that we've had in the last 40 years, this is not the time to go to the electorate and say, we're going to spend more money on the people who are not running the county. This council does not run the county. We have staff that does the day-to-day. We are an oversight body and time and again, I think we as a council get in too deep, a lot deeper than we should be. Where we set policy, we set budget and that sometimes we get way too deep. And that's why some people have more time to put into this and time, you know, work tends to expand to fit the time available. Sometimes it's best when you don't have the 30 hours a week. If you only have 20 hours a week, you become more efficient. Just looking at some of the numbers, if we're, if money were the object, right now for 14 members of this council, it looks like that we're, we're paying about $390,000 a year out of county money to support, to pay for 14 counselors. And yes, we don't get some of the other things that some other municipalities pay. If we had a council size of nine and paid our counselors 37 and a half and the mayor 75, which is what, the same ratio as we have now, we'd pay $375,000 for that council, which is 15,000 less than what we're paying now. So council size is something, I, I've got a, a friend in, in Mississauga who's looking at running and they, their salary's 90-some-odd thousand plus they get an expense account of another 20,000 plus a car allowance of 11,000, plus they get office staff and, and constituency money. But one counselor that represents, represents 90,000 people, this community is 25,000 people. Each counselor, on average in this community, represents 1,785 people. How much do you expect them to pay us? Yeah, it's great for, for all of us to be here, but the money has to come from somewhere. So I can't support this motion as presented at all.
Okay. Thank you. Kate, do you have a, a point?
I do. I would like to rebut just some of the statements that have been made that related to my accusations that anyone should not be at this table, that there, that there were personal insults levied. So no, at no time do I criticize a single member of this council. I know all of you. I know all of you to be here for the right reasons. So I am not questioning your, your decency or your commitment to this community. I'm saying we're shutting, nor am I saying you shouldn't run, no matter what demographic you're in. I'm not saying you should not run. I'm saying that there are people now prohibited from running. The other, the other items, the other issues that, that people have brought up in workshops and afterwards with former counselors and myself are, are similar to what Counsel Bullock brought up, which is dealing with the chronic negativity and not feeling experienced enough to do this job. But number one on the list for many people is, I just can't afford, it, it translates into my life as, as financial hardship. So those other reasons are important too. The only one that we have within our realm of control is council pay. So at no, but I want to reiterate, at no time do I not believe anyone here doesn't, shouldn't run, nor do I believe anyone here doesn't belong here. I've never said that. I've simply observed that we're all of a certain, that we all have a certain ability to conduct our own lives, that we are not at the hands of, that, that our finances are within our own control. That is it.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel McMahon, followed by Counsel Hirsch.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, off the top, I, I get that this is a lot bigger job that we do than, than people realize and, and we do take a lot of criticism for what we do. But that being said, being a counselor is still a part-time job. And Kate, you used the expression take-home, like take-home pay is something that I relate to a full-time job as opposed to a part-time job. I, I get that we want to attract a good and diverse number of people on council, but this resolution sounds like the battle cry of the greedy to me. And, and I think that's what it's going to sound like to a lot of our residents. There's a lot of people who've lost their jobs or a lot of people who are have, struggling to put food on the table, to pay their rent, and, and we're talking about increasing salaries, something like 36%? It's a part-time job. I didn't come into this, yeah, I'm retired. Do I have a pension? Yeah, kind of, sort of, but I was unemployed all my life, so I didn't get one of these neat pensions that some people get. But regardless, yes, I can make ends meet. There are other people here that are continuing to work. Yeah, I get that too. But this is still a part-time job. We have to realize that. It's not a full-time job. Our residents don't get to decide what their salary is, so why do we get to decide that? Maybe we need a third party to do this. And, and Counsel St. Jean did send a, an email out to people. Maybe we should be going out to a third party to look at this type of thing. Everyone else gets a raise on merit. So maybe we haven't, not everybody has registered to be part of the election. Is there a possibility that we can put a question on the ballot that says, does council deserve a raise? Madam Clerk? Since the ballot hasn't been put out.
Through the chair, we have, we have missed the deadline for the minister to approve a question on the ballot. That deadline was March 31st, 2022.
Wow. Could we waive that procedurally like we did earlier today?
Well, we are creatures of the province.
We're going to go to Counsel Hirsch, next, followed by the mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Harper. I'll, I'll just be brief. I, I personally believe there's, there is no doubt that there are good, well-qualified, capable people who are in essence stopped from participating in this, in this occupation because of the dollar sign. I, I think there's no doubt about that and, and like most of the rest of you, I'm certainly not in it for the money. I'm, I'm here to serve. But I think two things, and Counsel Bullock mentioned this, size of council would be an issue, which we can't, we can't, even if we wanted to, get into right now. That would be a matter for the next council to perhaps address. So doing something in terms of the coming election doesn't work from that standpoint. Plus, the economic climate that we find ourselves in at this particular moment is, is absolutely dreadful. And, and the thought of, of imposing the kind of taxing increase that this would amount to for council of the current size, I think it's just, it's just not palatable for our constituents overall. So Counsel Maynard put the suggestion that perhaps we should get staff to come back with a compensation review. I could support that, that idea, which is kind of the end of, of Counsel McNautin's motion, but the motion as a whole, I, I can't support as it stands.
Thank you. Mayor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And a lot's been said and I'm not going to repeat a lot of it, but I, I do want to agree with some of the, some of the comments that have been, have been put forward. You know, I, I think like everybody, I have been asking people if they were interested in, in running for a position on council. And more often than not, the, the comment I get back and it, no one, I agree with Counsel Bullock, no one has ever raised the issue of salary. They have always said, I don't know how you guys do it. And a lot of that concerns the criticism and the scrutiny we're under and, and this Counsel McNautin's motion has started to elicit a lot of commentary from, from the public already. But salary is only one piece of a much larger and more complex puzzle. The next council, I believe, in the next four years is going to be very difficult. There will be a lot of challenges, but that council should undertake a, or direct staff at least, to do a fulsome review of, of compensation, but it should not be up to this council at all. And also what, what is the basis of agreement to this, you know, why, why should I or any, any of us agree to what is in front of us? We have no staff report dealing with this specific issue. We, the salary compensation inclusive of, of the mayors is at a certain percentage of the budget. How does that percentage compare to other, other locations? Are we high or are we low? Who are the comparators? And we have, have no data about, you know, their process, so it would be wholly inappropriate near. near irresponsible for me to approve this without fulsome data, accompanied by a third-party human resources review or some consultancy, as well as public consultation, because ultimately we get paid by the public. And there will possibly be considerably more. But on that basis, I cannot and will not support this.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Forster, I saw a hand.
I have heard a lot of talk about how this job has changed so much over the years. I don't really think it's changed that much. The number of issues has magnified, the number of complaints have magnified, and that's basically because of what's happened to the county over the last few years. But I look at the role of the councillor, and I used to hear this all the time when I first became a councillor, eleven years ago, backroom deals, who you knew, what you knew, what you could get fixed. And I guess I've always sort of looked at, maybe council a little bit different, or my role as a councillor maybe a little bit different than some other councillors look at it. My job is to set policy, procedures. Staff's job is to carry out that. I don't call, every once in a while, I'll call up Mercier, or I'll call up one of the managers and say, you know, I need something here, this is a problem. But it's not my day-to-day job to do that. And I think a lot of councils think that what they want to do is get re-elected, and by getting to get re-elected is getting involved with every little issue that goes on out there, which in turn causes much bigger issues. And I want everybody to think about that. I'm not here next term. I've done my twelve years, I've done my public service. But your job is to set policy and procedures, not necessarily procedures, but mainly policy. You can write procedures. And if you're getting involved with every little detail that's taking thirty hours a week, then you're not really doing your job right. I'm sorry to say that, but that's the way I feel. That's the way I was taught to manage stuff. And I think sometimes we spend way too much time getting involved with nitty-gritty stuff that we really have no control over once the policies have been set.
Okay, thanks. I'm just going to summarize for a second and then ask councillor McNaughton what she'd like to do here. So what I'm hearing is three things, third-party staff report and public consultation. So I'm wondering councillor McNaughton, do you see yourself amending what you see here, or do you want us to vote on what we see?
Very good question. So we've already agreed to a full review of the adjustment policy next year, and at the time that that policy review got pushed off to twenty-twenty-three, at the June ninth meeting, we, within the text, it said at that time, council, you know, that council could decide to do a more expansive review at that time. When that passed, I sort of took that as something that was going forward. What we're looking at is an emergency sort of attempt to open doors during the nomination period. I hear what my colleagues have said, I'm not surprised. I certainly think doing a referral to staff to request for a target, a more equitable, equitable entry target might be during the nomination period. If there was a chance, we could receive it back based on the idea of what a living, what a basic needs, what would meet someone's basic needs in this community, which is sort of what this number was based on, based on the living wage network, and to see if there was a more palatable option for the July meeting. And I would certainly put that referral on the floor if it seemed like staff would be able to comment on whether a process would be even possible in that time.
Okay, so I'm looking at the clerk and asking if she's got something. Are you working on something, or do we need to open up this discussion on? Right.
Oh, it's, I was looking for advice from the CAO prior to putting a referral on.
So CAO Wallace, would you like to weigh in on this? And what's doable from your standpoint?
So I'm just not totally clear what this amendment would be. If council's ready to vote for an increase, but the number you want us to come back with some advice on what the increased number should be, that's, I think, what you're asking?
So I think how I would word it might be a referral back to staff to establish during the nomination period what an adequate equitable barrier-free entry to participation in the electoral process for prospective councillors, or for prospective candidates, something along those lines.
For what year?
For this nomination period. Yes. Well, it wouldn't come into effect until the next council, and then it would be up for review within the first year of that next council.
Madam Clerk, did you get, did you get something you can, at least, you start to discuss and see if there's an amendment there?
So that the matter be referred to staff for council remuneration during the nomination period to participate in the electoral process?
Does that capture councillor McNaughton?
Not quite. I still wouldn't mind comment from the CAO first, if possible.
So through the chair to councillor McNaughton, I just, I think that, so we, it's very difficult to put anything else on the agenda, so I think that this needs to be very clear that council wants remuneration to be increased for the twenty-twenty-three year. But you're asking for a report to determine the amount based on, I'm not, like, I'm just, because if it is a report on this subject, we will not be able to come back with anything different than you already have in this conversation. So it really, if you're asking for some help on the math of what that number should be, then that is something we could come back with. If you're saying you want the remuneration to be increased for this year to reduce barriers to nomination, but you are looking for a report to determine the exact number, that could be a clear motion for staff.
Madam Clerk?
Through the chair, in addition to what the CAO is speaking of, it's very important that council not be involved in the electoral process or the nomination process. Council has a very prescriptive and distinct role in the election under the municipal elections act. So if that is a reason why you're looking at remuneration, then that, my advice would be that that's not legislatively legal.
All right, so what I'm hearing then is...
Call the move.
So unless it's for a different purpose, it can just not be tied to the election, to remove barriers for potential candidates.
I understand that you guys are ready for the vote, but I will say that we have always, at the end of the term of council, set the rate for the incoming, for the incoming council in the, at the end of the two terms that I've been part of. We have set the rate for the incoming council.
Councillor Nyman, then councillor Bullock.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think council has set the rate. I think it's just basically the cost of living is what we've been getting, and that's what, is that not correct, Madam CAO? If it is, it's just cost of living is all.
So through the chair to councillor Nyman, we have a council remuneration adjustment policy. It is, we use that policy. I don't have it in front of me, but that's the policy that determines the rate. And that is why it was discussed to come back in twenty-three, so that the next council could review, and also as part of this motion, that the council could review the way the policy is set, because that's what determines. So you set the rate indirectly by setting the policy by which we calculate the rate.
So that's taken care of already. Thank you.
Councillor Bullock. Councillor Bullock is at the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think, I thank our Madam Clerk for bringing that point up, because obviously in the previous years, implementing policy that's already been set is different than changing the policy in an electoral period. And I think, yeah, that's a very good point, that we shouldn't be tinkering with this, as I said earlier, timing is everything. So I would urge us to take the vote.
So just a point of clarification?
Then we're going to call the vote.
So as I confirmed with staff in advance of even considering this, when I thought that the matter was coming forward on June ninth, I did ask about it and was led to understand that the adjustment policy refers to adjustments within the term, not setting the term base rate, just to clarify.
Going to call the vote, all in favor?
Record a vote.
Councillor Nyman's asking for a recorded vote.
Can I have the motion read, please?
It's already been put on the floor, and we're not changing it?
It's, the main motion is on the agenda, so that council, in order to foster a more inclusive local government during the electoral nomination period, and to bring council remuneration closer to the region's livable wage, set the compensation for members of council as follows effective January first, twenty-twenty-three. That council set the compensation for position of municipal councillor for twenty-twenty-three at thirty-five thousand three hundred, and that council directs staff to include this in the proposed twenty-twenty-three operating budget, and that council directs staff to include the following during the twenty-twenty-three review of the council remuneration adjustment That the full review of council and mayoral compensation include a livable wage lens and an equity diversity and inclusion lens, and that the new policy appoints a final date by which each current council will have the base rate and terms of compensation for the successive term of council, and that this date falls before the electoral nomination period.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we'll do a recorded vote?
Councillor Nyman?
Oppose.
Councillor Prinsen?
Opposed.
Councillor Roberts?
Not present.
Councillor Bolick?
Opposed to.
Councillor Forrester?
Opposed to.
Councillor Harper?
Opposed to.
Councillor Hirsch?
Opposed.
Councillor McNaughton?
In favor of.
Councillor Margitson?
He's coming on.
Councillor Maynard?
Opposed at that rate.
Councillor McMahon?
Opposed to.
Mayor Ferguson?
Opposed.
Mr. Chair, that loses.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm going to hand the chair back to councillor McNaughton for number eight.
Thank you very much. So now we've got a bit of a situation. We've got, before we move into closed session, I just want to make sure that we're going to have quorum, because we've got councillor Forrester leaving right now, and we've got councillor Hirsch, councillor Prinsen is gone, and councillor Hirsch and councillor Nyman, I think we might have to recess. And I would love the clerk's advice, would you like a recess, or, and how do we handle that? Because I believe we're losing quorum.
Through you, Madam Chair. So should quorum be lost due to a departure of one or more members prior to the adjournment of a meeting as per procedural bylaw, section twelve point two five? The meeting is adjourned.
So now, in order to... In order to manage to keep this closed session on track, I would like to ask the CAO if there, well, if we recess now...
So through the chair, I think that you should just recess without reference to return date, and we can do this offline and find a time to re...
Thank you very much. So let's do that, Madam Clerk. In order to recess, what would you like from me?
Sorry. Yeah, I mean, if we recess, that means this meeting is not adjourned. So we recess, and then we continue this portion of committee of the whole at a later date.
Is that acceptable?
Lose quorum. We're taking a recess because we've been at this for the, for over the allotted amount of time. During the recess, we will determine whether we are going to have quorum.
Certainly.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We're not recessing. I think, as the clerk said, is if you lose quorum, the meeting is adjourned. You're not, there's no recess, it's adjourned.
We can call a recess prior to losing quorum. So I'm trying to attend to that. So if we call a recess, which I'm about to do right now, and if we can't re-establish quorum after a ten-minute break, then the meeting will be recessed.
But it says it has to be adjourned. You can't recess.
We're all on the same page, Dave. So recess, just say recess.
If you're in recess...
If you're in recess...
Yes, motion to extend. Thank you, Counselor Margatson. Do we have a seconder?
Sure.
Done. Counselor Hirsch. All in favor? That carries. Margatson. Yep. Now, can I have a motion to move us into closed? Can I have a motion to move us into closed? Thank you, Counselor Bolick, seconded by Count, by Mayor Ferguson.
Bolick, this is a Bolick-Ferguson motion to move into closed.
To consider, I'll finish. You're not looking at it, so I'll finish it for you. Litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board pursuant to Section 239, subsection 2E of the Municipal Act.
Exactly that, thank you.
Okay, exactly what Counselor Bolick meant. All in favor? Thank you. We all await your command, Madam. Thank you. We all await your command, Madam.
You gonna take it? Thank you. We have returned, oops. We have returned from closed session, and we are moving on to item nine, which is adjournment. And Counselor Bolick is going to move that. And the seconder is going to be Counselor Hirsch.
This is a Bolick-Hirsch motion that this meeting now adjourn at 4:33 PM.
All in favor? Thank you. That passes. If that wasn't clear. All in favor?
Can we move a budget to get decent chairs?
Goodbye, thank you for staying that long.
Can we move a budget amendment to get decent chairs for the CIO and the clerk? Although I suspect if the CIO really wanted to, she could make the budget.